I'd like to call this meeting of the Coventry Town Council to order at 6:00 PM. Clerk, please take the role.
Yeah.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Here.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Here.
Vice President Verducci?
Here.
President Lima?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Moving to me, I'm sorry, emergency evacuation plan in the event of an emergency. Those present this evening can exit outdoors labeled number one or two in the back of council chambers to the front park, uh, front lawn or back parking lot of town hall. Moving to meeting minutes from prior meetings, we have two sets this evening. January 28th, 2025, open session. February 11th, 2025, open session. Do I have a motion to approve these as a block?
A motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci? President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
And do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of January 28th and February 11th, 2025?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilman Brown. Do I hear any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the council, can I hear a motion to add public comment for undocketed items up at next on our agenda?
A motion.
A second.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the council, could I hear a motion to limit remarks to four minutes per person?
Make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi?
Second.
Second by Councilman Brown. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
Members of the public, those who'd like to make a public comment on undocketed items, those items on our, not on our agenda this evening, may approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, make sure the microphone is on and has a green light, and you may begin your four minutes. Yep, undocketed.
Hi, my name is Brittany Boyer. I live at 318 Town Farm Road. Starting off tonight, I want to bring attention to something that has deeply saddened myself and many other residents, the resignation of former Councilman Copley and former Councilman The Blank. This town has suffered a significant loss with their departure. Shame on every single one of you who played a role in pushing these two dedicated public servants to the point of stepping down. My original plan was to speak on the issue of the redacted invoices, a topic that's been heavily discussed. While I understand we may be past the point of resolution, I feel compelled to offer a solution. At a recent meeting, Solicitor Angel stated that one of the primary reasons for the redactions was a HIPAA compliance issue. Meanwhile, President Lima offered a very different reason, stating she did not trust her fellow council members. I can't fix the trust issues among you, but I can speak to HIPAA. I am a HIPAA compliance officer for a local medical practice. Making a group HIPAA compliant is not difficult, it's quite straightforward. I'm offering to certify members of the council in HIPAA compliance at no cost. If the stated reason for redactions is truly HIPAA, let's eliminate that barrier. However, I suspect that even if this offer were accepted, new reasons would surface for keeping things hidden. Let's not forget, at the March 11th meeting, the temper tantrum President Lima displayed was nothing short of embarrassing and gave all women a bad name. Women in positions of power often has to work twice as hard to maintain respect because there is an unfair but persistent stereotype that women act on emotion rather than reason. President Lima, your actions that night didn't just reflect poorly on you, they validated that harmful perception, and you set all of us back. We expect more from our leaders, especially those representing women in leadership. Beyond that, and more importantly, President Lima is a known violation of the town charter, and yet not one of you on the council has blinked an eye. No action, no accountability, no acknowledgement. It's infuriating and insulting to the residents of Coventry that those entrusted to uphold our local laws and values so easily turn a blind eye when it's politically convenient. In what other situation would you ever pay a bill blindly without looking it over? Never mind one that's over budget by nearly $400,000, because that's exactly what we're doing. We're taking whatever number Angel Law gives us and we're paying it with no questions asked, because President Lima said it's okay, just as she said it was okay when Solicitor Angel contributed to her campaign fund. Knowing what's appropriate doesn't seem to be anyone's strong suit on this council, and the taxpayers are footing the bill for your lack of integrity. The rest of you sitting on this council should be ashamed of what has transpired. Even if you weren't directly involved in what led to these resignations, your silence is complicity. Not being part of the problem does not excuse you from being a part of the solution. Councilman Verducci, I had so much hope for you, but after hearing about the false allegations and the situations that have transpired, it's clear you also hold no value in your title here. You've allowed yourself to become part of the problem, whether by choice or by silence. Right now, it seems the only interest some of you have in the council is how many zeros your check has from Solicitor Angel. Councilman Brown, Councilman Pasqua, Councilwoman Capaldi, the most noble thing you could do at this time is step down. You don't even have the decency to send an acknowledgement email back to presidents back to residents who write to you. Set a precedent to the president and vice president that we, the people, will not stand for this. Show us that accountability still exists within this government and lead by example instead of self-interest. Let me be clear. The people of Coventry see what's happening. We're done being quiet, we're tired, we're fed up, and we're ready to act. Change is coming because we've all had enough.
Good evening. My name is Shay Scott. I'm a third-generation family that's lived in Coventry. I have seen the in and outs of this town council with every other situation becoming a toe of just corruption. Stuff falling down by the wayside, back and forth between the school committee and the town council. I also, Mr. Verducci, had huge faith in you, and we had a phone conversation over this matter. And with you bringing to light some things shouldn't be put out and made it sound like that we're in HIPAA violation. HIPAA was not exactly the word you said to me, but you stated that there were some things that could hinder the town, the town council, this and that. Where does the town council benefit from not making everything public to every single one of you? I don't understand that. Is anybody able to answer that? Why we should keep any information, not only from our town people, but from your peers as well? What is the benefit from that? You are literally putting out to the town of Coventry residents that you're hiding something by not sharing with your fellow town councilmen. These men, just like yourself, are doing a public service, and right now, that's not what's happening. Your own two men that sat to your left have left because you guys can't agree upon giving something that he had full right permission to receive. You are on a public display and having full-blown arguments with the gentleman that stood in my position here, saying that he basically was not allowed to receive that information. Why is the question I have? What is the reason for you other members not allowing these two gentlemen to be privy? Councilman Lima, I ask you this. Who is allowed? Do you get to make that decision? Because all of you have one goal, and it's for this town of Coventry. It's not for yourselves, it's not for two people to know, it's for everybody to be privy to all information. Jonathan, I sat and watched you at your last meeting with the school committee and watched the superintendent and you, and you publicly put on Facebook about how a school bus costing $80,000 and you're 40, 80, what the heck, you know, we're only in five million deficit over here. But, you know, and how you thought, well, that's absurd, it's a yellow school bus? Those are our kids. Not only do special needs kids go to other schools, other kids that we don't have programs because we're 35th ranked in the state. Like, let's get it together, guys. You're a team, you're supposed to be working for us, not individually, together as a team. Yes, the whole point I have in seven of you is to have different views on things, to have a public debate about things, not amongst yourself hiding paperwork about money and stuff like that. We have spent decades here going down the rabbit hole of just more money and debt. Let's fix that and come up with a solution. And if people have to actually resign, and you, um, Capaldi, being on your cell phone doesn't look really healthy for your public view for everybody that's watching. Yeah, well, I think you can just glance down at it. It's very rude. It's very rude. It's very rude. Very rude. Very rude. I did this at the school committee meeting when, you know, everybody was just on their cell phones. It's rude. You guys need to learn to get it together. Mr. Verducci, I hope you being new, Chief Brown, I hope, because you have been under the radar for stuff very similar in situations, you guys can make a difference and stand up to these other people and voice your opinion, because it's getting disgusting on how people are being. Thank you.
Any other members in chambers, public comment on undocketed items?
Hello, friends? Sure. Um, I'm just coming up here quick. Uh, my name is Brian Keesling, I'm on Arnold Road Four. Um, I'm also the representative of Rhode Island Fucked Up News, you guys have probably seen me on Facebook. Um, I only started doing what I'm doing because Lima would not call me back. I've talked to John about Lima, I've talked to Frank Brown about Lima, and I've talked to JP about Lima. I've also talked to another young lady that works in your department or with you guys or had worked with you guys, Aprila, Asylla, or something of this nature, trying to get you to call me back, and you never would, numerous times.
You've never left me a message.
Yes, I did. I left all these other people messages.
I don't have any messages from you.
Okay, that sounds great, right? But I started, right, you got a grin on your face, but I started Rhode Island Fucked Up News for a reason, and it was to represent myself and these people because you wouldn't do it. Thank you, guys.
Hi, Linda Brown, 5 Kylie Way. Um, been in Coventry for 20 years now, and also have been super disappointed at the lack of ability to bring forth bonds because of our terrible bond rating, our continued deficits, problems with, you know, all sorts of stuff. Um, this item caught my attention, and I did want to back up the lady that mentioned HIPAA. I'm also a security and HIPAA expert, and everything security-related is on a need-to-know basis. There is nothing that should be redacted from the other town council members. I don't care what you say. There is no federal regulation, I do it all up to FedRAMP. There is nothing that says that one person on a council is the only one that gets to see billing from a law firm that she has a previous relationship with and who goes that far over budget. It's disgusting.
Members of the public on Zoom, public comment on undocketed items, please raise your hand to be let in. Yes, Mr. Guthrie?
Is it on, yes? Scott Guthrie, 31 Maplewood Drive, former representative District 28, former representative District 41 in Coventry. So, people are pretty upset right now. I'm upset. I was at a meeting, uh, last week, and I was upset because I kept getting told to sit down that I used up enough of my time. The people in this room, you're responsible for and you have to listen to. You know, I sat in the legislature when I got, when I got phone calls, I had to listen to them and I had to address them. That was my job. If it took me two hours to talk to someone on the phone, it took me two hours. If it takes me 15 minutes to talk to you right now, it's going to take 15 minutes. Now, this all started with, um, Jamie LeBlank had a problem with a charter violation, and the charter violation was questionable. The, so, the new solicitor, when he came to town, didn't want to be called an employee, so he came out here in public in front of, in front of everyone that was on the council and said, "I'm going to be your solicitor, and this is going to be my contract. But I'm not going to call myself a solicitor, I'm going to call myself a vendor." So, what I do is I went on the charter and ran onto the search engine and looked up vendor. So, Mr. Solicitor, can you tell me what subsection 5616 says in the town charter?
We'll, we'll respond to it once all comments have been brought in.
Okay, so there's the first question. So, what it does is it says what you have to pay to be a vendor in the town of Coventry. Now, we'll go to, um, the amendment of a charter. There were two, two violations of the charter that, one, one came up to me yesterday, it was done in 2018, where, um, a town council president did not have a charter review and commission in place and put a question on the ballot, and it went to the voters, and it caused holy hell, and that's one of the ones that talked about how we finance ourselves, our financial town meeting, um, when we went to the all-day referendum and this and that. The last violation of the charter was on August 1st, when our current council president, um, put a question, excuse me, added a question that was left out of the previous charter review, which I chaired in 2022. That question was to send a letter to the voters to, to explain to them how the town needs to run because we no longer have journalism, we no longer have media, what we have is we have social media and gab. I'm glad that, that the press is here tonight so that they can probably help us get through this, but... When you have a charter in this town, and when it was written, it, it was started in 1970, I know I, I spoke with you last week, and I brought you the 1972 charter, and it predated when my parents were involved in politics and elected to office in this town. But that is the document that we follow. I also mentioned last week that the solicitor had some questions about the Supreme Court and our charter. I don't care what the Supreme Court says, the people of Coventry run the people of Coventry. All right? That is our charter, that is our document, that is our constitution. Okay? To amend the charter, okay? You have to do it in a specific way. You can't, you can't just say, "We're going to take this out," and you can't just say, "We're going to put this in." You have to have a charter review in place. It can't just be willy-nilly, "This is what I want, and this is what I'm going to do." That happened. That is a violation of 3.14 in the charter, which calls for the dismissal of the person that did it. So, when the council president put a resolution, let me see, it was, it was on, um, I watched it a little while ago, it was the last charter review.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up. I, everybody else has been respectful.
I think they're going to let me talk.
Everybody else has been respectful of their four minutes, you've, you've already made, you've made these points at a previous meeting.
Well, I think they're going to let me talk for a few more minutes.
Mr. Guthrie, I'm asking you to bring it to a conclusion.
Okay, so, on, on August 1st, you had a meeting and illegally passed a char, and illegally added a question to the ballot in the state of Rhode Island against our charter and against the charter that's driven by the, um, Rhode Island Constitution. I have all the paperwork that I could show you and every single law that you broke, and you're going to make me sit down. And I have no problem sitting down, but everybody in this room is going to know that you violated the charter. The penalty for violating anything in this charter, let me, let me pull this up, because this, this, this kind of spells it out. It says, "If you violate any section of the charter, you are up for dismissal." I'm not going to call for your dismissal, but what I would do, what I would like to say is all the people that are on this council, go sit in that room and have an executive session and figure out how to run this town government. It's not working. Two people left. I was on the charter review that added, that added two people to this town council because of the size of the town. It's not what we wanted, we wanted to have seven individual districts, and it got changed. It got changed to keep five and have two at large. And they did the same thing for the school committee, and they violated state law then when they said that those two, um, at-large school committee members will serve two-year terms too, where state law says a school committee person shall serve four-year terms. Nobody listened to what we said. I'll say it again, I said it last week. We put packets in, in the town council, uh, we put our state law, um, in the, in the packets of the town council that was to vote on how and how legally they could change the charter. That stuff disappeared. That stuff was pulled out. I can blame it on a lot of people. I blame it on the former solicitor, and I blame it on the former, um, um, town, uh, town manager. I could also blame it on the, on the president, council president, but I won't. When, when paper disappears, all right, that goes through a legal process in this town, that's a problem, and it should never happen again. I will share all of this information with you to make this town work. I don't want to see it fall apart. We're falling apart, we lose two guys. Now, we have, we have... No, no applause. We, we have people that, that want to make three other people disappear, which is not what I want to see. What I want to see is I want to see a council that works. I want to see a council that answers their phone. Mrs. Capaldi, I called you four days in a row. Uh, I'm sorry. All right, all right, I'm, I'm, I, 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 it won't make the exact, I, I, what, I'll tell you this. I called you on a Monday, said, "Hi, Alicia, it's Scott, it's Monday, day one, I got a constituent that has a problem, I'd like you to, to address it." On the Tuesday, I called you and I said, "Oh, it's day two, don't argue with me."
Not arguing, you know, you know I've always answered your calls, I have not received
Sorry, but you haven't.
I, I'll, here's my phone. Look at it, there's no voice message.
Sorry, but you haven't.
Mr. Guthrie, do you, what further point can you?
I want a town that, I want a town that wants to work, and I believe the people that are behind me want, wants to have a town council that's going to be able to make this town succeed and thrive. It's not working right now. Now, we have two less people. That's going to cost us $40,000 to replace those people. Now, you have a bunch of people in here that want to eliminate three more. That'll cost $120,000 to replace those people. When are we going to get it right? Start following the charter. The first thing you should have done when you were elected is picked up the charter and read it, so that you know what you can and what you can't do. I know what I can, I can, can and can't do as a taxpayer, and I know what you can and can't do according to the charter because I've read it all. I've read it all. Please, let's get this fixed, and let's not get into, into some kind of a war between the citizens and the town council. I want things to work. You need to, you need to open your ears up a little bit more because the people are really, really getting loud. Thank you for your service.
Members of the public on Zoom, public comment on undocketed items, please raise your hand to be let in. Unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. Yes, the last call for anyone in the room, please. Oh, sorry, we already let this person in. I'll go to this one, and we'll come to you.
Hi, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name's Tom Nichols, 159 Lewis Farm Road. Um, I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight in person, but, um, I wanted to share my concerns. Um, I think what concerns me is that this could have been resolved fairly, fairly easily by taking Jamie and Scott's concerns and, and addressing them. If there's nothing, uh, you know, improper going on, um, letting them see the, the, the unredacted invoices could have been done, and, and all of what they were saying would have been just a bunch of nothing. Um, and, and, but, that wasn't allowed. Now, and the question, the question is why? And, and so you're causing, you're, you're creating a question, and now people are asking why. Everybody, everyone wants to know, well, well, why, what, what are we hiding? And if it's a trust issue, I don't think that's valid because those people were elected to, to their town council positions, uh, same as you, and you don't get to, uh, you know, say that, that this other person who's a peer, um, doesn't have the same rights on the council as you. So, so now everybody in the town is, is wondering, well, why is there not transparency? Why is there not fiscal transparency? And that's what we need right now, is transparency. We've got a huge overblown budget, financial and, and legal liabilities that have been created, and, and some people are questioning this, and, and by not addressing their concerns, you're, you're making the question, I think, even more valid. And, and that's why everybody is concerned now, is because it's been tried to be swept away instead of being addressed. Now, I know, company I work for, if my CEO was approving invoices and then sending redacted invoices to the controller, the controller would have a fit. Now, my question is, what happens if there's, the, the redacted invoices, seems like it creates an auditing issue? What if down the road, uh, you know, that some, some financial audit needs to happen, and, and we don't have complete invoices? Does, does, uh, the President Lima have the unredacted invoices in, in her own personal file? Or, or, or are those unredacted invoices somewhere else? Because if, if nobody else has that information, down the road, maybe even after these council members leave, uh, their terms, we don't have those records anymore. That's, that seems like it should be a large concern for everybody, uh, on the town in terms of record-keeping. Now, again, I ask the question, why could this not be resolved, um, you know, when those concerns are brought? And I think the fact that they were not addressed could, could have, you know, could, could have solved this very easily, and it didn't, and I think that's why we're in this place now. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to the room. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, make sure the mic is green and on.
Hi, my name is Kayla Amaral, live at 52 Hornbeam Road. Um, I just wanted to come up and speak for a moment because I did want to reiterate that every last one of you are the reason why those two men are not sitting there. Every last one of you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown- Every last one of you, Mr. Brown, Mr. Verducci, we know you're safe for six months, but the four of you, if you have any ounce of integrity at all, you will all step down because what you're doing for this town is wrong. There are citizens in the back of this room that have filed for an official recall of you three today, and will be standing out there when this meeting concludes. We have 30 days to gather over 1,100 or so signatures over the next 30 days to have each and every one of you three recalled. So I wanted the public to know. If they're interested, they can contact us. They can meet us in the hallway, and they can sign. Thank you.
Ms. Kane, I saw your hand up.
Cheryl Kane, 185 Rees Schoolhouse Road. I'm here in addition to not following the town charter. We also don't follow our town ordinances when it comes to customary home occupations. You know I have been here many times when it comes to illegal home occupations. So I really think we should address that. We all pay good high taxes when it comes to living in Coventry because we come here for the safety and the quality of life, for the peace and quiet, not to be afraid of having our houses burned down or flooded because of the erosion from other people's properties. Because when we have certain kind of legal customary home occupations, they involve heavy equipment. And as you know, we've had this conversation many, many times. So this is why I want, I really do need to have, the reason why we first come to Coventry is for that reason. All of us have been here for many, many years, and that's the reason why we came here, for a certain quality of life. I understand that we're going to be building homes recently or condos, and I understand that we need those, and I understand because we need affordable housing and just housing all over Rhode Island. But what I, I don't understand is why we can't adjust the amount of them. Like, if you say, okay, we want 700, why can't we do 350? I mean, I think that we should look at the surrounding area, the safety. And the reason I'm saying safety is last night I went to center of New England. It was 10 o'clock at night. I went to Walmart, and as I was leaving, it was raining, and the Coventry, the lighting in Coventry is insignificant. No, it's insufficient. And what happened is that you can't see at nighttime because even Sandy Bottom Road's the same thing. So I'm coming out of New England, center of New England. There's a car coming right at me in the other vehicle next to me. And I understand why, because when I got to the end, when I looked to my left where the Wendy's is, it's all dark there. So when you're coming off and you're coming on to there, you can't tell that you have to go around to your left. So I think that before we really build up Coventry, we really need to take care of our infrastructure. So, I mean, when it comes to our roads, our lighting is number one. Our schools, our buildings, there is so much to be done before we can address, to bring other people, because aren't we concerned of their quality of life that we're bringing into our town? We want to have the best schools. We want to be able to support these people and not just bring them in and go, oh, well, what do we do with these people now? Now we have to add on to our schools. There's a little bit more. Also, when it comes to farms, I am such a pro plus when it comes to having farms in our areas, but my question is, is we encourage this, and we want to bring this into the two to five, 10-acre areas, and then we have cluster developments come up. What do we do with these farm animals? These people have put out their entire savings to buy this property to have a farm. And then 10 later, 10 years, five years later, you have a development coming next door. We will have another Faith Hill Farms was going on in East Greenwood. So I really, again, want to address that. I know that you are the town council, and you have to bring it down to Mr. Perillo, and then he would have to address the department heads. But like I said, there is just so much that we're not doing for the people that we have in town now. We want to address that. That is number one. People that we have here now, they are the people that we should be taking care of and then bring the people in because we want a better quality of life and safety for everybody. Thank you.
Last call, council chambers, yes, in the back.
Good evening. My name's Sherri Eldiken. I live at 979 Victory Highway. Thank you for granting me the opportunity to speak tonight. Let me start by thanking the former council members, Mr. LeBlanc and Mr. Copley, for representing the interest of the community, making decisions, making decisions on policies, budgets, and ordinance to improve the quality of life for the residents and following our town charter. Thank you for serving with integrity, listening to the people's requests, and doing your due diligence to ensure the people of Coventry are heard and represented. Represented it. As for the rest of you, shame on you. Each one of you. It appears you have your own agenda, and you have a place, you have placed that above the needs, wants, and desires of the town of Coventry. Whether it be the pond, the Tom Lloyd Fire Department, or whatever backhanded dealings you're involved in, how dare you disregard our town charter because it doesn't align with your agenda? President Lima, this is not a dictatorship, and your behavior in meetings has lacked professionalism. If you wish to be the sole person, if you wish to be the sole person overlooking the town finances, then please share with us, what are your qualifications? Are you an accountant?
I'll address everyone's questions at the end. Thank you.
Well, okay, fine. Are you a certified public accountant? Perhaps if you are, you should apply to the town to be a financial officer and resign from the town council. You have a duty, you have a duty to this town to follow our charter and to be as transparent as possible while ensuring our tax dollars are not being squandered or misappropriated. Your blatant disregard for the town charter is horrifying and illegal. As for the rest of you, how dare you not speak up and support our town charter and the people who elected you? Your actions speak volume and cause questioning for your integrity. As a taxpayer and a voter of the town of Coventry, President Lima, I am demanding your resignation from the town council for your illegal acts while serving, while serving on the town council. And for the rest of you, you have no right to hold your current positions if you can't even uphold our charter. I will leave this along with the two letters of resignations. I wish them to be added into the meeting minutes this evening.
Hi, Michelle Tugus, 17 Anthony Street. I don't know how I can follow after you, Sherri, but I guess my biggest question is, what has happened between last year and this year? I'm in District 3, so Jamie, since before he became a councilman, honest, integrity. I put all my faith in him, and I actually apologize for my ignorance because I actually backed away because I really thought our town was in good hands. And this is my question to you guys. What has happened between last year and this year? And how did we get to this point? That's it. Thank you.
Hi, Bob.
Making notes while listening to all of you.
Bob Brennan, 12 Teague Drive East, Coventry. A lot of this, I know, stems from the last town council meeting where there was a little bit of an uproar with demands that all the council members have access to unredacted financial statements from the town solicitor. Okay. There are reasons why that should not happen. Some of those line items on there are concerned with ongoing legal cases. Things that are discussed in executive session are, are protected by, by the Ethics Commission and state law. If it goes out to the individual council members, the town manager, whoever, outside of that executive session, it is subject to Freedom of Information Act, which means that you would be taking and putting confidential information available to anybody in a court adversarial situation. Regarding the charter violations, there are two points that the contract is in violation. One is that the town council, the town council president does have access to that. That's an administrative, an administrative duty which you should not be having. That position should not have. But making every other council member have the same information doesn't make that better. The second one is a little bit more subtle. Okay? The second one is the auditing of, by the town financial manager. Okay? And if you read the charter, and yes, I was on the charter commission with Scott, and I have read the charter, and I have reviewed that charter, and that does not say a line item audit. It mere, it, it states that it should be audited to be within budget, which, if I recall from past meetings, our current position is that the solicitor's budget is under budget for this year. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's been a lot of stuff being pushed out. I'm sorry to see that Jamie and Scott have, have left. At the same time, remarks that they put out were inflammatory and vaguely in the case, and actually in the case of Scott, insulting. I expect more from members of the town council. These five up here and those two who are no longer here. That's all I have to say.
Last call in the room. I'm looking for folks who have not spoken yet before I go to Zoom. Okay. Moving to Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in and unmute yourself. State your name and address for the record.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Tricia Hunt, 526 Camp Westwood Road. I'm also sorry that I could not be there in person tonight. I agree very much with the previous virtual speaker, Tom, in his comments, and I want to thank Mr. Brennan for just most recently being so calm and informative. I think it is too bad that we find ourselves in this scenario. I wish that this many citizens showed up on a regular basis to participate more regularly, not just during turmoil. I think that those who have been consistently paying attention would find actually many ways in which our longest-standing town council members, Mr. LeBlanc included, have been a part of positive financial and planning development. This is why I personally do feel upset that all this is happening, especially seeing Mr. LeBlanc resign. I think that he offered the council a great balance and asked a lot of really great thoughtful questions that helped to keep us in a place of positive financial planning and progress. I do agree with Mr. Guthrie in the sense that I'm actually not asking for anyone's dismissal. I, I wonder who would even, who would even run, and I do thank you for your service. But what I am asking is for your acknowledgement that there, there actually may have been some wrongdoing and some, some parts not being aligned with our charter, and just fix what is going against our charter, and, and let's keep moving forward, being productive. I, I'm looking forward to the docketed items and have more questions, and looking forward to hearing the financial report from the financial committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in. Public comment on undocketed items. Please unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Pat Boishman. I reside at 9 Rivers Edge Drive here in Coventry. I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to render my support for the town council as a whole. I am disappointed that there happens to be the resignation of two individual members of this group. My thought is that there are mechanisms in place in which things can be brought up to a higher level for questioning rather than abdicating responsibility to the constituents of the particular districts, that there are mechanisms in place to pursue additional inquiry or complaint as opposed to leaving the positions. I think about those members of our Congress who are in major discourse at this point in time, and those individuals are not leaving, but they are staying to work through a process. And I would hope that the remaining members, and I do not want to see additional people leave the council, but to use the mechanisms in place to appeal to a higher level and to work such things through. This is very critical. I don't think things should be aired out on public platforms when there are ways in which people can work through to some sort of reconciliation. I want to render my support for my personal district representative who has been very responsive to the times in which I have called upon her to make inquiry or to provide information to me. So I am hopeful that moving forward, and I think that has to happen in executive session, that there is some working through of the matter, and I will be hopeful that we will have a better outcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Members of the public on Zoom, please raise your hand to be let in. State your name and address for the record. Final call, council chambers, public comment on undocketed items. Mr. Guthrie.
The first thing I brought up was, I'd like an answer to the question that I asked of the solicitor, what subsection 5616 is in the charter. Has to do with vendors. Can you read it so the public can understand what it is? And so I can understand what it is?
Yep. Are there, I just want to-
A copy? Want a copy? You're a vendor.
You can give it to the clerk. We'll vote to put that and other documents into the record.
I think that the people in this room would like to know what it means. I said earlier when I, when I spoke that he didn't want to be considered an employee of the town, and he didn't want to negotiate behind closed doors, which is law. So he came out here and he convinced seven people, okay, to say, you have to have a supermajority to get rid of me. And there has to be seven of you in the room. There's two people missing. He ain't going anywhere for a long time, at least until the next election. The least you can do, Mr. Solicitor, is take and keep a copy of the charter next to you. Town manager has one. I'm not going to ask him to read it. I'm asking you to read it. You're the guy that's the legal, the legal person for this town. You can't answer a single question. I'm asking you to, to just say, what does this say in the charter? And you can't even do that. And for over $800,000 a year, I think that's a pretty poor excuse.
Last call, public comment, council chambers.
What is it? Steven Angel?
Please state your name and address.
Shay Scott, 42, Laurel Ave, Coventry, Rhode Island. Okay. Excuse me, Steven Engel? Is that how you say your name? You have not once addressed your eyes towards the public at all. I just witnessed you telling Lima how to do her job when someone asked a question. So are you the president or is the solicitor helping you out with what's taking place? My question, and I'd like in the public meeting minutes and for the entire town to know, what is it that the solicitor has that cannot be publicized? So add that to the questions at the end of your meeting today and answer the question, what cannot be shared that was not shared with the two gentlemen that are no longer here? I would like to know. What does a vendor mean? Are you able to tell me that, President Lima? Since, are we at the end of this meeting? Because it's getting verbatim, and you have not addressed one thing tonight. And your solicitor? I'm sorry, I have no faith in a man that can't look people in the eye when they're speaking. And you know what? I can actually write and take notes and still look at people when they're talking. Also, I was around when HIPAA was invented 20, 30, 40 years ago. I worked for a top doctor who was very involved in writing HIPAA. So this whole crap about not being able to share it, not with your fellow colleagues, is just really appalling. I don't even know, you know, what your position entails, but to sit here and watch you argue with people who went and asked for a documentation for whatever the reason, what this document is, I'd like to know now. I'd like for the town to know because it's looking like Mrs. Lima, and I'm sorry to say this, but you're that man's puppet, and you just proved it by him answering and telling you when to speak. Because isn't there an anarchy here? President, Vice President, the rest of the town district people? Because that's what it looks like. You need to stand up and have a backbone and represent this town like you're supposed to. I called you two years ago when the whole thing with the town, the school committee and the whole district trained, and you told me just to show you your character out to the public, "Oh, well, that's not the town council's problem. That's not our fight." Word for word is what you told me.
The town council has no authority to govern the operations.
Right. But you can weigh in on stuff and hear conversations.
Committeeman Mayor is here from the school committee, and he, I'm sure would-
Yeah, and we all know where that's going. Look at where we've been for two years now, you know? But town solicitor, I think along with the other people who need to step down, your position needs to go as well. So maybe you resigning and us town members figuring out how that can be done. Because it's appalling that you are hired by whomever, well, if it's Mr. Perillo over here or these lovely people. You're not complying with what everybody is asking. I'm sorry. There should nothing, a case in point, the main word here said tonight, transparency. It's not being done. It's backdooring stuff, and this town council for decades has been doing a number, not yourselves, but decades of other town council members backdooring stuff. It's not a good look. I don't know how long you've been in your position, Steven, but it's time that you suck it up, take it back, and put it out to the public what's going on and what Mr. LeBlanc wanted to know because he's the only person that when I had problems and questions for that school committee concerning my child's future was the one that couldn't answer me. Not you, Mrs. Lima. You know what? Being part of the solution is what every single one of you are here to do, and you're being part of the problem.
Last call, public comment. Once, going twice, three times, public comment is closed. Mr. Angel, did you want comments?
Madam President, did you want to accept the items into the record?
Yes. Could I get a motion to accept items submitted and public comment into the record, please?
Take that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
As far as the items directed to others, it's for them to answer. There's been a lot of discussion, not with these people in the room, not with the public to this extent in terms of its viewership, with respect to the engagement in the position of town solicitor. So in November of '22, a ballot question was passed by the voters, making the position of solicitor a council appointment and not an appointment of the town manager who works for the council. It was at that time that I was appointed as town solicitor myself in my firm. In January of that year, the town council was presented with a letter of engagement by me and my firm, which is very similar to the one that was presented to them this past January. Mr. LeBlanc sat on both of those councils, and he voted for both of those letters of engagement. In both of those letters of engagement, it addresses the procedure for providing billing statements, invoices, and time specifications for payment in a manner that is consistent with Rule 1.6 of the Rules of Professional Responsibility promulgated by the, excuse me, the Rhode Island State Supreme Court. And I'm going to address some issues in the letters of resignations as they pertain to me, particularly as it pertains to the filing of a disciplinary complaint against me by former councilman Scott Copley. So in those letters of engagement, it specifically calls out keeping invoices privileged and confidential, which in particular-
Please, please do not shout out. You were given your opportunity.
Which in particular addresses, we'll call it billing. Billing consists of an invoice. Invoices are broken down by category of work, and on those invoices, from time to time, there are costs. Once, I think we have billed the town for costs in the past three years or so. There's been much said about the cost of the litigation in the Johnsons' Pond matter. Over $400,000 in costs were related to experts. And someone says that, you know, those cost features were not included in my invoices. They weren't. They were billed directly to the town, and those records are available through the Finance Office. You can ask for them. There's a reason why lawyers engage experts in the course of litigation and in the course of other matters. That is so that their work, the work product of the experts during litigation or in other matters is not discoverable through an Access to Public Records Act request. Otherwise, it puts the town at a strategic disadvantage in its prosecution of those matters. So let me talk a little bit about why invoices, not the invoices, but the time specifications that accompany them are redacted, okay? Rule 1.6 of the Rhode Island Supreme Court Rules of Professional Conduct has an express provision, okay, as I, and to keep information, client information confidential. That express provision is embodied in my fee agreement, okay? The council agreed to a procedure for verification of the time spent, that it would be the council president who reviewed that. There was a question tonight about where that information is archived. It is archived on the hard drive for the town email in that email account. Why isn't it archived somewhere else? Because the town does not have a vendor management program that deals with confidential information of this kind. It's just that simple.
Please, Mr. Guthrie, do not shout out, and others, please.
Despite having been informed of the reasons for providing both redacted and unredacted information regarding our billing, okay, the two council members took exception recently to that, recently. Those two council members also voted in favor of that letter of engagement on January 28th of this year. You might be asking yourself, and it's too bad nobody did ask this question, what did change following January 28th? Because there are answers to those questions, okay? And I would suggest to you that it's not the agenda that's in front of you. There is a pre-audit duty in the charter, okay, for sure, in 10.14, okay? And we'll talk about what is precedential, the charter or state law. And in this particular instance, and we've done the research, in this particular instance, let's assume that there was a conflict between the charter and the Supreme Court Rules of Professional Conduct. A charter provision obligating me to produce unredacted statements and time specifications to the Finance Department is preempted by the Rules of Professional Conduct, where the production of unredacted billing statements would reveal information relating to the solicitor's representation of the town, which would be a violation of Rule 1.6 concerning confidentiality of information, particularly where we know that that information could be exposed or we have a reasonable belief that that information would be exposed. There are no less than one, two, and three cases on point. Tenetti Enters LLC versus Mendon Road Leasing Corporation to 2008 Rhode Island Supreme Court decision that cited Heal versus Heal, which is a 2000 case in the Rhode Island State Supreme Court. You'll also want to reference Rhode Island General Law's 8-6-2 subsection A, which specifically speaks and says that a pronouncement of the Rhode Island Supreme Court with respect to its rulemaking ability has the full force and effect of the general law of the state of Rhode Island taking precedent over any provision to the contrary, and that does include your charter because those cases speak to just that scenario. I'll move on to some other questions. There was a question of whether or not I'm a vendor. For purposes of payment, and I say I am talking about my firm, first of all, my firm was not paid $800,000 last year in the town of Coventry. The budget, I believe, was $640,000 last year. That's not what we were paid. We weren't paid that. There were others that draw from that budget as well, including outside counsel. Some witness, some expert fees, I think, were charged to that account as well. You can ask Mr. Sivetti. He'll provide you with the W-2 for any lawyer who did work for the town of Coventry last year, and they'll be produced for you, okay? But we didn't make that money. That's not what we made, okay? In the Johnsons' Pond case, over the course of two years, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is that we were paid about $170,000 in the course of two years in litigation that was exceptionally time-consuming. We made the least of any lawyers that were involved, and we made less than the experts did. We did our job, okay? We absolutely did our job, and I stand behind the work that was done and the quality of the work that was done there. So to suggest for a minute that people were unaware of that, it's a distortion of the record. I sat in meetings with people who have resigned here, who wanted to spend the unreserved balance, dip into the piggy bank of this town to buy the pond and to condemn it right away without any justification for doing so, which is a legal nuclear nightmare, okay? That's what he wanted to do. That was Mr. LeBlanc. Mr. LeBlanc wanted to dip into the rainy day fund. So-
Please.
I've been asked to respond to some questions. So are we a vendor? We are paid as a vendor, but we provide a category of service called professional services, much like architects, engineers, accountants, and other consultants to the town. I didn't ask not to be an employee of the town. We can't be employees of the town. The solicitor function is an independent function. It is an appointment of the charter. We're governed by the Rules of Professional Conduct, and that notwithstanding, it is not a paid employee position of the town, which would require payment of benefits such as health care and pension. That's not what we do. We're independent. We're paid on a 1099 basis, along with every other lawyer who performs services for the town. We're not vendors. It doesn't apply.
Nope. Well, he's answering questions right now. Please. Please, you had your opportunity. He's answering questions.
So to answer the question, so to answer the question about the review or the verification on the billing, the letter of engagement specifically states what that process is. It stated in there, the council agreed to it. That's what the council agreed to. I'd like to address, I'd like to address some things that were said about me in the exhibits that were submitted tonight as part of public comment. The public should be aware as to the timeline, because I've also seen some things on social media that are frankly inaccurate, as to the timeline with respect to the filing of a disciplinary complaint against me. The public should be aware that I learned of the disciplinary complaint having been filed yesterday. It was delivered to my office with its dismissal in a letter by the chief disciplinary counsel for the Rhode Island State Supreme Court. That letter was, I should say, that complaint was filed by Mr. Copley on Monday, March 24th. Disciplinary counsel took whatever time it took during the week to make their decision, okay? What was provided to disciplinary counsel is best described as a 13-page, single-spaced screed of whatever it was that Mr. Copley and whoever else helped him draft this wanted to send to disciplinary counsel. Disciplinary counsel acknowledged the request for an investigation and advised that there was no violation of, because the conduct implicated, did not implicate a violation of the Rules of Professional Conduct, and did not allege conduct within the meaning of those rules, the complaint was dismissed. That's right here. I received that yesterday. It was the first time I'd had notice of it. If it were a complaint that had been investigated, then I would have had notice of it before. So for someone to say that I had notice of this before yesterday at 10:00 in the morning is just a flat-out lie. I did not. And I also find it offensive that somebody would take a shot at my license, okay? That's just wrong. You don't do that. I don't care who you are. It's ungrounded, and they knew it was ungrounded. It's absolutely ungrounded and false allegations in that complaint. Just going through my notes, I know people were wondering why they saw the top of my head. I take notes. I want to go through the notes and make sure that I didn't miss anything. I've explained why the redacted portions of time specifications should not be made public. I've addressed the review process. I've addressed whether or not that process and redacted invoices is somehow a violation of the charter. I've addressed the context of professional service. I've addressed the context of professional services versus employee or vendor. Have I missed anything, counsel?
Councilor Pasqua.
Steve, can you make mention about the timeline of a police report that was filed? Because I guess the letter that was sent by Copley said that there was a police report filed in retaliation to a disciplinary accusation.
Yeah, so this is in the record. That's a good point. So let's talk about that. So, and I want the public to be aware. I didn't know of the disciplinary complaint that was made by Mr. Copley on the 24th until yesterday, when it was dismissed because the disciplinary counsel chose not to investigate and turn it into a formal complaint process. He says it's retaliation. I can't retaliate for something I don't know about, but there was no retaliation. I will tell you what happened. On Friday, March 21st, I received a call from Vice President Verducci. The Vice President left me a I beg your pardon, March 21st. It was a Friday. Whatever that Friday was. Let me get my calendar. 21st. It was Friday, March 21st. I know it was. It was Friday, March 21st, I received a call from Vice President Verducci, left me a voicemail, and said, "I need you to call me back," which I did. I called him at 5:30 on my way home from the office. He related to me that he had had a conversation with Mr. Copley in response to the meeting that prior Tuesday on the 18th with the intent of, you know, getting to the bottom of some behavior at the meeting and some comments and just to iron out a working relationship. Mr. Verducci, in the course of talking with me, related to me that Mr. Copley was quite animated and quite angry on the call and made a comment to him that was very concerning to me. And that comment concerned the council president. And the comment was simply this, and I apologize if people are going to be offended, but these are the words. "I'm going to go to her house, and I'm going to skull-fuck her." Okay? That's what was said to me. As I am not only the solicitor, but I'm an officer of the court. And as an officer of the court and as a practicing attorney, okay? When I made aware of a threat of promised physical violence, I have an obligation to report that, and I did report that. I reported that to someone in the Coventry Police Department, that I had reason to believe that this promise was in earnest, and I reported that to the Coventry Police. That was it. Okay? On Monday, Monday morning, first thing Monday morning, I can tell you what I did. What I did was I spoke to my assistant solicitor, John Verdeckia, who is in charge of the criminal prosecutions for Coventry. He does that for me. I spoke to John Verdeckia, and I made him aware of the factual circumstances and who it involved. And I made him aware that if there was to be a charging decision made, that we were not to participate in that and that it was to be sent to the Rhode Island Attorney General under all circumstances. And that was it. No other discussion on the matter was had. I didn't give a witness statement. I didn't make a complaint. I didn't do anything. I reported a prospective threat of sexual physical violence on a female. Could have been your sister, your mother, your friend, or a councilperson. Either way, as an attorney, if it is a prospective threat of physical violence, I am going to report that to the legal authorities. And that is precisely what I did. Because it is in his letter of resignation that you asked us to put into the record. That's correct. That's, he did not say that, but that is the alleged complaint.
We're not getting into a back and forth. Please.
I hear say.
Please. We're not. We are not getting into a back and forth. Please. Please stop shouting.
Let me answer your question.
Please stop. Please stop shouting. Please stop shouting. Stop shouting. Stop shouting. We have the police here. I don't want to have to use them. No, we're not shouting out questions, please. We're Come up to the microphone, please. State your name and address on the record.
I'm not trying to be disrespectful. I'm just looking for clarity about the confidentiality comment that was made. My understanding with confidentiality, you're you're a vendor of the town of Coventry, correct?
We are paid as a vendor. We provide professional services.
Okay.
Very different type of relationship.
Okay. I'm just looking to understand the confidentiality piece of this. So you're telling me that your services are confidential to our financial our financial team? I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. I'm losing my words.
The content of the time specification is it is protected under Rule 1.6 of the Rules of Professional Conduct. Yes, it is.
Okay. But my understanding with the town charter is that a member of the town council cannot have administrative duties. Am I wrong in believing that? I do believe that is what I read.
In this particular instance, the letter of engagement wrapped around the fact that Rule 1.6 requires confidentiality is a way around that. That's what, the charter did not anticipate the Rules of Professional Conduct. Just didn't. I mean, there are things that your charter just doesn't anticipate, and state law occupies that field of regulation.
But why is a member of the town council acting as an administrator looking over this when somebody in the town itself should be looking it over?
They're verif, it could be anybody here. They're verifying the fact that time was spent, what it was spent on, and that it ties out to the actual invoice. That's what they look at.
Okay. But I still believe that she is performing an administrative duty, which is against our town charter. Can you tell me with absolute 100% faith, as an attorney, your license, that she is not acting as an administrator?
I don't feel that she's performing an administrative duty in there.
You don't feel.
That's my opinion.
But the public feels she is.
Are there any other members of the council who were addressed that would like to address comments? Councilor Pasqua.
Boy, I took a lot of notes. Okay. First, a couple of things. There was quite a few people that came up and made mention that members up here on council didn't care because you hadn't heard from us about this issue. So one of the lessons that I had to learn, and I learned it the hard way, was speaking before I understood things in totality. And this is such an important issue to a lot of people, and we're sworn to protect the charter. So I wanted to make sure, and I think this is probably the same feeling amongst other council members, because there have been concerns and conversations on this side. But the before you make a public statement or you, you know, make an important legislative move that can affect the town forever, you really need to be sure if you're correct in your decision. And these are not easy decisions. So, you know, there's a bunch of us up here. In order to be a town council person, you just get 50 signatures. You go around, you knock on some doors, you get 50 signatures, and you run for office. And you don't have to be a lawyer. You don't have to be an accountant. You can be anybody and just come up here. So you're not born with those that legal information and that background. And some people up here are new to Coventry. As a matter of fact, when I came on council, I was the longest-standing resident of the town. Lima was new. Ludwig was new. Shockley was newish. LeBlanc was new. These were not people that lived here for 20 years. I was the longest-standing one. So some of the council members up here are not familiar with history of the town, things that we've done wrong, things that we've done right. And so, you know, you have to understand that we're not coming up here with this knowledge in our heads, so we've got to figure out if we're right or if we're wrong. And so when this topic came up a couple of weeks ago, just a couple of weeks ago, I didn't necessarily think that there was, you know, I understood what was going on. I needed to know more. That's why you didn't hear from me. I generally try and get online and say, "Hey, guys, this is what's going on. This is where we are." But I just really wasn't sure, because I heard one side, "No, we're okay." And I hear other sides, "Well, we might have an issue." Well, we're all human, right? Everybody up here is human, and we will 150% make mistakes. I'm not saying we did here, but I'm saying we will. We will be wrong on things. I will be wrong. And to me, it matters if you correct your mistakes and how you learn from them and how you proceed forward. That really defines the person. And so I can tell you for certainty that I have had questions. Hey, do we need to amend anything? Are we incorrect on this issue? And I've been waiting to hear the resolution on that. And so if you rewind these YouTube videos going back a couple of meetings, you'll hear me say that I thought, hey, you know what? With all this controversy, maybe there's an issue. Why don't we just let the town manager look at the invoices and just take it right out of council's hands? It makes no difference to me. I mean, he's paid by the town. He's administrator. Let him have it. I don't have an issue with that. I see no issue with that. And up until Mr. Brennan spoke, I really personally didn't have an issue with council members seeing invoices. Didn't care. If they want to see the invoices in executive session, as long as they didn't blast them on social media and hurt our people, our town, and give the opponent an advantage over us, what's it matter to me? So, but Mr. Brennan made up a good point. And I can respect that, and I understand why that this is probably maybe something that should be going to the town manager. A couple of weeks ago, we looked at a resolution that was put before us that sort of outlined the procedure for invoices to kind of like solidify it in some type of legal proceeding on how we were going to do, you know, look at these invoices. We didn't support it. We tabled it. We didn't support it. Nobody up here said, "I make a motion to approve this. I second it. Let's vote on it." Nobody did that. I got the emails from you guys saying, "Hey, let's not pass this resolution. We're concerned about it." I didn't ask for it to be passed. I said, "Okay, fine." I can see the concern. So to say that we have not been concerned about this is totally inaccurate. You just haven't heard from us yet because we haven't, at least for me, anyway, haven't had enough information to give you something worthwhile and factual. The other thing I want to bring up, too, is LeBlanc, he's been on council longer than all of us. So Mr. LeBlanc knows how to pass resolutions, how to make amendments to resolutions, and knows what happens when you vote on things or don't vote on them. He knows that you can ask to table things to learn more about them. We've all done that. We've all done it. So as somebody who's been on council the longest, out of everybody, I was surprised when, two things. Number one, he did approve a very similar contract two years ago when he was council leadership. And he'd never made a gripe about it. The language was the same. It was a supermajority. It was all there. But it wasn't a problem back then. And back then, he was asked, "Do you want to," and correct me if I'm wrong, he was asked, "Do you want to see these invoices unredacted?" He said, "No, Lima, you can do it." And then all of a sudden, we have the next very similar town solicitor contract come up, and he brings up a concern about the supermajority. I get it. To me, I'm like, well, maybe he's right on this, you know? We're seven people. If four vote yes for something, I think that holds the weight. But maybe I'm wrong. I'm not a lawyer. Again, you could be anybody and be council. I'm not a lawyer. So let's see what the ruling is on that. Mr. LeBlanc knew very well that there was an opportunity, because he brought it up, too, that there was an opportunity to amend the solicitor's contract. He asked the solicitor, "Would you still be interested in providing service at the town of Coventry," he said it in some form like that, "if we amended your contract to not be a supermajority?" And the solicitor replied, "Yes, no problem." The amendment was never made. He never made the amendment. He knew he could do that. He's been on council longer than everybody. He had the ability right then and there to make that amendment and call it a day. And I can tell you, I would have voted for it. I, you know, I'm not going to recall a vote up here. That would be illegal, but personally, I would have voted for that. That never happened. So I was extremely shocked after seven people passed the solicitor's contract. They knew of the possible issue with the supermajority. No amendments were made, and this was just passed. And then all of a sudden, it was the end of the world. So again, I'm not saying anybody in this room is wrong or right. I'm just saying that we had to look at that information and figure out what the heck was going on and make the right call on this. There's also been like sentiment where like our the two council members that left have been kind of bullied and by themselves. The reality is, if you look back at the voting record of almost every single thing that we've done, it's been 7-0. They have agreed with us on everything. And, you know, I think there is significant value in having people on council that disagree with others. I did not think they were bad for council. I thought having two people looking at things differently was a good thing, because I'm not going to be right on everything. I guarantee you I will be wrong, and I guarantee you I have been wrong. But one of the things that separates me from some people is that I appreciate the back and forth, because if somebody is against something, they might have a reason that's valid. And that's going to help me understand and clarify my position on something. I'm not the smartest person in the room, and I will never pretend to be. We are better together with opposing views, and that's the best way we can serve the town of Coventry, plain and simple. And so I am definitely saddened to see LeBlanc go. And I purposely did not say Copley for a reason. But I am saddened to see LeBlanc go. He was, as you know, the pond is my district, and it's not the only thing I care about. I've worked, I've worked. It's not. I've worked hard to make good promises like getting Senator New England solved, getting a grant writer, which has given us over $10 million. All of these things I've talked about doing for the town, I've done. The pond, I want it for everybody, not for just a few people. That's the truth. I spent a few weeks trying to get public access negotiated for everybody outside of the council. So anyways, look. My point is, I want to thank LeBlanc for that, because LeBlanc was the spearhead for eminent domain, not me. I stepped away from that vote, and he was the full sponsor of taking the reservoir, not me. And I thank him for that, because I think it was the right thing to do, and he knew that. That was a big deal for him. I also want to address a comment that was made about being paid by the solicitor or something. I think it was Ms. Boyer that mentioned something about council members being paid by the solicitor office. We make $75 a week. We don't get paid from Stephen Angel. We don't work for him. I don't get paid from Stephen Angel. I just don't tell you. So the other thing that I want to mention is that when we talk about, and this is just my basic understanding, okay? When we talk about the legal redacted invoices, and mind you, before this problem happened, I never even really heard the term redacted invoices. I'll be honest with you. I was kind of in a loss of what the heck are you even talking about? I'm not a accountant. I'm a paramedic. I'm not an accountant. I'm a firefighter. So I had to understand all of that stuff. And one of the comments that was made was about the finance director seeing unredacted invoices. So let me bring you guys back to 2022, when I came on council and joined Ms. Lima and LeBlanc, who became leaders of the town council. One of the first things that we did was we fired the finance director. And we And we did that and it was under duress. We found all kinds of checks on, you know, cash in the office. There were, obviously you guys see the issue with the finances that took us years to gain control of the books. Can you imagine what would have happened if the person that we fired, who was really pissed off with the town, knew every single thing that we were doing legally, lawsuits that we were about to sue people for, experts that we were using to defend ourselves and had information that could dismantle the town? That's a dangerous thing for all of us. And that's a that's a dangerous thing for all of us. And so I, I can understand the issue with not allowing somebody who's not in executive session, because the finance director is not in the executive session when we talk about very sensitive legal issues. So we're essentially bringing information to somebody who knows nothing about this stuff and all of a sudden we're exposing them to stuff that's actually privileged confidential information. That's a tricky thing. I can't imagine anybody would want us to do that. It's not good for anybody. Town of Coventry, none of us. So I'm gonna, I'm also going to add this. One of the public comments was about members of Congress not leaving and so on and so forth. So, you know, again, I'll go back to what I said. I appreciate the back and forth and I think having opposing views on council is healthy. It's good. It's a sign of a healthy council. But when things get tough and you don't agree with your fellow council members and your constituents support your views, the last thing that you do is quit. You do not get up and walk away from your seat where you have the power to make change and leave. That's a cowardly thing to do. And I learned to not do that when I was five years old. I didn't get my way into sandbox and you just got up and left. I, I thank LeBlanc for his service, but I am utterly and furiously disappointed in him for getting up and quitting. Ridiculous. He has made, and I can tell you, this is with confidence, he's made several comments about quitting if certain things didn't go his way over the last few months. So it was a surprise, but not when I heard about this. And I will address, Shay, you had a question, I think, or just... Can you come to the mic that way people can?
So I know I get a little worked up over these things, as all can tell. My question is, from the time that I seen somebody here post something about not being transparent with all town council members to calling Mr. Verducci, trying to get clarification and understanding, I'm still at limbo here that I believe this gentleman was standing at the podium or maybe it was someone else, but I'm pretty sure it was him. And there was a debacle between a councilman and asking for information, to be privy to information that apparently I'm understanding, some of you already had privy to or will have privy to. That is what I would like to understand. Because if one person is holding higher power over, regardless what the situation is, that's not good for any of you. You should all have equalness in your positions, I feel. You're all here to do the same thing, just in different areas of the town. Like that's where I'm understanding. We are the direct question, I know you haven't had your chance to speak, President Lima, Jonathan speaking, is what we're asking. Why, why is this situation have come down to this? I don't know exactly every single detail that these two gentlemen who are no longer here had or in good intentions or bad intentions. But to have members get up and walk away, I can tell you right now, they felt defeated. I got an inkling and an itch in myself to come run for townwide positions. And I got told by a neighbor in my town, after he saw me and our fight with all the moms for the district change for the school committee. And he said, you need to think about it long and hard. You have children, which I'm sure some of you do of all age. And it is a thankless job. I appreciate every single one of your persons' jobs, but when it gets to the point of people having derogatory comments towards each other or physical artications or just not being privy to what is allowed in their position, this is a problem. It's a huge problem, guys. Some of you are new. Some of you will be here for however long, some of you will leave, maybe, I don't know.
Shay, I just want to get clarification on your question, so I answer it. Can you summarize your question for me?
The question is, a town council, Polly and the other gentleman were asking for documentation, correct? Why wasn't it given it to them? Why weren't they privy? Was it given to them and they just made a big scene on social media for some outlook? I don't know. Could you answer that?
Yeah, so I don't have the answer if documents were given to them or not. I believe Lima, she can answer this on her own, but she may have offered them to LeBlanc, I don't know. But I, again, I kind of thought in a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Perillo is a competent town manager.
Yeah, he's
We crossed him, we pointed him to this position. I suggested a couple of weeks ago, let's just let him do the things and just take the council out of it. If the council wants to see something, let's go in executive session and if it's a legal matter, let's talk about it, fine.
Right.
But just let the CEO of the town do it. That was really my thought, I mean, he's in the executive session anyway. You know, I mean, that's, that was my position and it remains to be that. I don't
Well, I'm not disagreeing with you, but why couldn't we come to head, comply with that guy and then say, hey, Mr. Perillo, could you take this over? This is a big situation. We'd lick our hands out of the pot. You said that, oh, well, you know, I wasn't for this, you know? Why wasn't someone else amending things or raising their hand? Saying, you know, maybe this gentleman's right.
I'll give you my thought when we had the contract, the solicitor's contract. When that question came up, I just like you was like, hmm, maybe they're right on the super majority. I don't know. I thought to myself, we had to have a charter question, have a super majority for the budget. So maybe we needed the super majority to have something else. I don't know. It was just kind of brainstorming in my head. But my thought process was that if we are incorrect with the solicitor's contract and a vote happens where four people say, hey, you know, Mr. Angel, we appreciate your time. Thank you. We're going to change direction. Then if the charter is law, it's going to be the law anyway. You can have four votes. If the charter is not going to, I thought the charter would not supersede the contract, that the charter would prevail. So that was my thinking, like, okay, well, you know, I don't know if this is right or wrong. Nobody else made a motion to change anything as well as myself. I didn't either. But I kind of thought, well, if it ever comes up, if the charter is the way to go, then the charter is going to be a four-three vote anyway. If that's the vote, it could have been a five, it could have been a 7-0 vote, I don't know. But that was my thinking at the time. I just didn't have enough information to know if it was right or wrong. Truly, I didn't.
Shay, can I give some other council members a chance to speak? They've been asking, so.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Jonathan. Thank you for letting me come back up here.
Councilwoman Capaldi.
Thanks for that, John. I think you took everything that I was going to say. I have nothing to say anymore. Yes, I have a child at home. Yes, I make $178 a month. When taxes come out, it's like 140. Yes, I know, I've heard these on social media. I have a real job, a day job. Yes, I do answer my phones. Sorry, I didn't get it. I just can't believe the way that this was handled. And I'm going to probably bounce off John a lot because he's already said a lot that I wanted to say. But when this came up the first, like three meetings ago, I didn't know what was going on. I did not have any knowledge at all with this, with the invoices, with redacted, unredacted, who sees it, who doesn't see it. It was never a part of my existence here. So to have the community out there talk about I was in cahoots or I'm doing something backhanded or blah, 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 blah. It just went on and on and on. And we all know social media. And you also know that we can't go on social media because we got into trouble. We learned the hard way. OMA, if multiple congress member, congress, we're in congress now. Council members are talking on Facebook together. I just, I was, that man in that picture down near Cheryl is my dad. He was a municipal court judge for 40 years. And he instilled in me how to be honest, fair and do the right thing every frigging day of my life. And that's what I try to do here. So when I'm just lumped in without anyone doing their due diligence to find out, you know, what is right and what is wrong, and I'm lumped into that, that really did hurt. Yeah, I'm a human being up here. So to hear the people on social media just condemn without knowing the facts is horrible. Like John said, when I was up here on that first and then a couple of meetings after, I needed to do that due diligence so I had something to come back and talk about and make the right decisions. Every single thing that's up here is new to me. I know Noah DeFrank and JP. We learned from these guys right here because they are teaching us what has happened before, what didn't work, what does work. So I thank them for being here and kind of guiding us. But like I said, that man, my dad, it's a part of my life and I teach my daughter that too. I have never seen any invoices, period. That's it. I just wish people would stop, treat people like humans, listen to each other and do the right thing. Don't condemn without asking the right questions. And no one in my district, until this morning, I got two emails from somebody in my district. No one asked me, what are your thoughts, Alisa? What do you think's really going on? No one asked me. Excuse me? You asked me about this? You know what? I'm not going to go back and forth with you.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you. So I think both of my council members expressed it correctly. I'm the new guy on the council, I've been here four months. You know what? There's a learning curve that's like climbing Mount Everest to sit over here and to learn everything that's going on in this town. You know, my previous job, I had one focus. You sit on the council here, there's about 100 things that you got to look at. I appreciate the comments of the people coming up here. I certainly appreciate Mr. Brennan and his comments. I think you were 100% right with your comments. So I thank you for that. I wish the other two council members that resigned were still here because I think we could have worked through the issues. As Councilmember Capaldi said, we've been told to stay off social media. And if you don't know what OMA is, look it up because I've learned, I've been to more classes on OMA in the last couple of months. That's made my head spin. And just recently, as of the last couple of days, I've actually reached out for my own legal counsel because I want to learn a little bit more and that's on my dime. So when people say you're not, you're not being heard from and we're going to recall you, well, let me give you one piece of advice. If you want to run, run. Because I'll give you one reason why you shouldn't run and that's called social media. We all have families. I've had my daughters crying over the last couple of days of things that were posted to social media about their father. And if that doesn't hit you in the heart, as a parent, I got to tell you, nothing will. In my life right now, my family is number one. And when they're hurting, I'm hurting. It's time to move past what that does. So if you want to run or you want to recall me, I say, go right ahead because I'd like to see you sit over here and do what it takes to do this job. It's not for the money. You can have the $4,000 a year. Take it back. Make Mr. Sveti's job easier, one less check to cut. But let me tell you, careful. And if you're going to take this job, it's going to affect your family and that's not right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Capaldi briefly.
Yes, Brittany, I'm looking at the one, two, three, four emails that you sent me. The first two were asking me how to get onto the finance committee, which I did connect you to Hillary. Sorry, the first three. And the last one came to everybody. And it just said council members and it was just stating a fact and didn't see any, you weren't sending it to me to ask me a question or wanting me to call. So those are the four emails that you sent me. I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Vice President Verducci.
Just quick, you know, I want to mostly take Mr. Guthrie's advice here and listen. And I think we've done that tonight on both sides. So I do want to thank everybody for coming out and moving the conversation inside. I do appreciate people making these things. I really do try to get back to everyone who gets to me. Understand there's been frustration. You know, going along with what Rep. Pascal was saying, we do make mistakes sometimes. I'd be more than happy if anybody ever wants to discuss how these things happened, what it looks like to be being new, be more than happy to do that. But overall, I just want to say, you know, a big thank you to everybody for, you know, coming out and actually doing this in person. It takes a lot of the, you know, it gives it a little more humanity. We can see each other. This is town government, you know? We're going to be ringing out and stopping shop together. We're going to be living with each other in this town. And this is one issue that could potentially poison all the other issues we're facing, which as you all know are pretty big. You know, something I'm most interested in is the work we're doing in the financial world. We have some updates later tonight on that. But, you know, I just wanted to let everybody know, we hear you. I understand the frustration. I'm listening, I think we all are and I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'd like to address a couple of questions that have been asked and take a couple of minutes to walk through kind of the timeline here. Some of it's already been expressed, but I want to reiterate. In November of 2022, the voters of Coventry did pass a charter question changing how we appoint our town solicitor and giving that responsibility to the town council instead of the town manager. I want to reiterate, you do not need to have a charter review commission to put questions on a ballot. There's state law that provides for that. Later that month, the town council then appointed Stephen Angel Esquire as the new town solicitor. And Mr. Blank was also elected by his peers as council vice president. In the following month, in January of 2023, the town council approved a letter of engagement with Angel Law LLC, virtually the same as the contract that was approved in January of 2025. Fast forward to November of 2024, the council unanimously voted to reappoint Mr. Angel. And then again, on January 28th, 2025, we reviewed and approved virtually the same contract approved in 2023, which clearly outlined the invoicing process. Since the council appoints the solicitor, we are also responsible for submitting those invoices for payment. I'm following the legal advice I've been given about the path of these redacted invoices. You've heard this evening, many of the Supreme Court and state law that preempts our charter. There's many aspects of our charter that have been preempted by state law that's been enacted over the last 40 years, that has not been updated or kept up. Mr. Guthrie's asked for that commission to occur, to update the entire charter, and we need to fill that commission. Let me be very clear. This is probably the most professional and transparent legal relationship this town has had in a very long time. The previous solicitor left The previous solicitor left no record of a contract or an agreement, no invoice trail of how he was paid or how much, and he turned over the bare minimum in legal files when he left. If you go to Mr. Sveti, or you go to Mr. Perillo, they're not gonna be able to find for you any files from the legal team prior to Mr. Angel of how he was paid, how much he was paid, what attorneys were engaged. None of that exists. We have that structure now. Shortly after the January meeting, Mr. LeBlank had requested information from the town treasurer about the total legal cost for the Flat River Reservoir case or the Johnson's Pond case. The treasurer couldn't provide it. We've already heard why Mr. Sveti, as the town treasurer, only receives redacted invoices because he's not legally entitled to see the privileged details of ongoing litigation. He's not in executive session, he's not party to that litigation. To give him or anyone else unredacted invoices would jeopardize the town's legal position, as we've already discussed. For those who like an analogy, you, if you were coaching the Patriots, you wouldn't send over your game plan to the Jets before you play a Sunday night game. You would make winning nearly impossible, and it would cost this town a significant amount of money. This issue has been discussed at three separate town council meetings, January 28, March 11, March 25. And the solicitor has explained multiple times to the council and the public that unredacted invoices cannot be legally shared with the treasurer, and state law backs this up. I've offered olive branches behind the scenes in terms of changing how we do this process, but it would only be accepted if it was out in public and it was to be, it was to be made an issue further. We, I certainly didn't want it to escalate to this point at all. I think many people up here and residents of this town can tell you that I'm extremely reasonable and passionate and take this job very seriously. I, it can't be stated enough that as of right now, the legal department is tracking under budget, and that's in a fiscal year that ends on June 30, which is not far away. I do want to speak on the really disturbing piece of all of this. That's really hurtful that I heard women laugh and not believe the allegation when we had comments in this room about how I'm an embarrassment to women in leadership. To turn around and not believe the claim that I was threatened with sexual violence is deeply disturbing and makes me afraid to live in this community. I clearly don't have neighbors that would support this. On March 30, I received a call from Lieutenant Graham McCoy with the Coventry Police Department informing me of a phone conversation between the council vice president and Mr. Copley. Mr. Copley, frustrated about not getting an item on the agenda, said, and I quote, that if I didn't put it on the agenda, he would come to my home and skull fuck me. I didn't even know what that meant. I had to have someone tell me what that meant. It involves gouging out somebody's eyes and sticking their genitalia in someone's eye. And there are folks here that are okay with that. On April 1, on, excuse me, I'm speaking, you've asked me to speak, and I'm now speaking. On April 1, after discussing this with my husband, we filed the police report. Filed the police report, pressed charges, and requested a no trespass order. We cannot allow that kind of behavior to go unchecked. We may live in a society today where that type of behavior has become desensitized, and we accept that, but we cannot accept that any longer. This is now, the, the, the police report, the police report is being extended to the Attorney General's office for investigation. I was even told by the responding officer that Mr. Copley's attorney tried to threaten me into not filing, and not filing the no trespass order because it's a public discoverable document and it would be embarrassing. He threatened to blow up essentially every council meeting if I did file it. I am someone's daughter, someone's sister, someone's wife, someone's friend. I hope that none of you, particularly women, are ever subject to something like this. This is extremely serious, and the fact there are still women in this room laughing is disgraceful. I can't, I just can't believe that we would disregard when some woman's threatened. We must reject it. Then, 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 then on April 7, Solicitor Angel informed me that he had received word that Mr. Copley filed a complaint against him and his legal license with disciplinary counsel, which is an arm of the state judiciary, as he's explained, that investigates alleged misconduct by members of the bar. And that complaint was dismissed immediately, not even given a hearing, because it was so clearly baseless. And in their dismissal, they cited precedent and multiple pieces of multiple previous cases to show that withholding unredacted invoices is not a violation of the town charter and is preempted by state law. I am, I am someone, I, I've had to, I've had to watch the political cartoons made about me on this town, the comments made, the threats, the fat jokes. And to, and to say that I deserve that because I ran for office, we deserve to treat each other better. And as Mr. Brown said, please run. We, there was a, there was a, there was a struggle to get people to run for office in this town. I don't think any of the school committee races were contested. I think there was only two races contested for the entire town council. I want you to put yourselves in the shoes of the people sitting up here and ask yourself if you want to be on the receiving end of what some in this room and others online have levied against those of us sitting up there, up here, and in particular, to me. My father's standing in the back of the room. My father's had to watch all of this. My husband's tried to watch, my husband's had to watch all of this. Friends and family have had to watch all of this. I got involved, I, I had a passion for politics when I was 14 years old. I spoke at my first school committee meeting when I was 14 at Public Common. I learned then. All I want to do is show up here every two weeks and represent the residents of District 4 and the entire town to the best of my ability and to move this town forward. That's all I want to do. I, I don't want to fight. I don't, I, and I want to point it out, I've had many attacks levied against me, and many of them from the gentlemen who have resigned. I've never fired it back because I don't believe in doing that. I believe in using the platform here to address all of that on the public forum. So I'd really ask you all to just take a step back, understand, as Mr. Pasqua said, we're working through these, we're learning, we may make mistakes. But I can say with the fact that all of, all of us up here just want to get back to serving this town and doing work that benefits everybody here. I, it's just, I just, it's super upsetting that it's been reduced to this. Mr. LeBlank was the one who got me alerted to getting involved in the first place. He taped a sign to my door about sewers coming by my house and the outrageous assessments that were gonna be levied upon our neighborhood. Got me involved. Mr., you might remember, Mr. Blank and I were a team. I don't know what happened. I truly don't. And I, I wish it, I wish it didn't have to end this way. I echo the sentiments of Mr. Pasqua. Wish he was still up here. I don't run away from having discourse. That's part of a healthy democracy. That's, that's part of a healthy democracy. Please stop shouting out. Please. You ask, you ask me questions, I've allowed the back and forth. We're now getting to a point where we've had so much back and forth, I'm sure there's an OMA violation that's gonna be filed. Toot sweet. Yes, Councilwoman Capaldi.
I just want to say on public record, as the other woman on the council, when I heard of what happened to you, the threat, I started changing, I was scared. If he could do that to you, he could do that to everybody. So we are now being careful of where we park. We are now being careful not to be alone and definitely not to be where he is, because that threat is serious.
Vice President Verducci.
I'm gonna be honest with everybody here. I know everybody has, you know, some preconceived notions on this. I've talked to Mr. Copley for hours on end, going through these things. He was no enemy of mine. I spent a ton of time with him. I was merely relaying a story when it was alerted to me that this was a thing. This wasn't anything premeditated. It was a comment that was made, and it came up while I was speaking to the solicitor, as he described before. I've been on here a few months, I've talked to everybody, you can ask anybody on this council, I've never turned down any of that stuff. These weren't something to try to get over on somebody. That's exactly what I'm trying to get at, is we all make mistakes, we, it took... That's exactly what I'm trying to explain. I didn't, it was brought up before. I'm trying to explain, I'm being as honest as I can and addressing the people right Well, you can say that, but I'm not trying to look better, I'm trying to be honest. This isn't Facebook, this is real life, and I'm trying to talk to you.
Please, we, please stop the back and forth, we cannot do that.
I know, I'm trying to clarify.
Please stop shouting out, please. Do any council members have any final comments to share back? Do I have a motion to go to a 10-minute recess?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi. Seconded by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua.
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi.
Yes.
Vice President Verducci.
Yep.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Go to a 10-minute recess and then get on with the rest of our agenda this evening. Go to a 10-minute recess and then, um, begin, get on with the rest of our agenda this evening.
All right, we're going to come back out of recess. Um, we're going to move to public comment on docketed items only. Those item, items on our agenda. Any members of the public, public comment on docketed items? Members of the public on Zoom, public comment only on items that are on our agenda this evening. Please raise your hand to be let in. Please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Tricia Hunt, 526 Camp Westwood Road. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to comment on some of the docketed items, items as they relate to the budget and the finance committee. Obviously, there's some concern or it seems like the finance committee will have to not exist now that two council members have stepped down. And I just was hoping that there could be some comment on how the work that they were going to do or, or did do will still, um, be accounted for moving forward. I just had a lot of concerns about where the budget is, where it's going and what we're going to look at before we, um, move forward and adopt the budget.
That's a great question, Tricia. I'm, I think we're still grappling with how we're going to deal with that. The resignations just came yesterday, so, um, and I did get your email today. I apologize, it's been a crazy day and I look forward to, to getting together with you to discuss the, those matters that you've, that you wrote in the email.
Okay, great, thank you so much. And I'll continue to be a part of the process, uh, moving forward so that questions can get answered. And, and I do enjoy, um, working with the town council. I have found all of you extremely, extremely easy to work with.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt, really appreciate that. Any other members of the public on Zoom, public comment on those items on our agenda this evening? Public comment going once, going twice, three times, public comment is closed. At this time, I'd like to take a motion to take the agenda out of order.
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, seconded by Councilwoman Pasqua. Any discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
We'll move to, um, introduction of new matters before the council. We have the Chief of Municipal Finance for the State of Rhode Island, Steve Coleman here, um, to, uh, explain to the community what it means to have a distressed communities designation. We had some questions on this. So, Mr. Coleman, just, uh, come up to the microphone and state your name for us.
There we go, you can hear me now, right? Thank you for having me, Steve Coleman, Chief of Division Municipal Finance. Um, I, I think at different points of time, I may have met you individually as council members at different presentations that I've done, either newly elected officials or even some of the education summit stuff held by the League of Cities and Towns. Uh, I appreciate you being here, or let me be here, sorry. Um, and I just wanted to point out that I am a Coventry resident and I do appreciate your service. I know how difficult it could be in some of these positions and thank you very much. And additionally, uh, I'd like to thank Bob and Dan for their time that they spend on all the financial matters that they deal with, with our office. You have some good people here. I know a few years back, it was tough, uh, there was a lot of, uh, resources that left and now you got a good position. You guys are working towards resolutions, especially on the school side, so thank you very much. So, Dan thought it would be a good idea for me to come here today and explain distressed communities aid. So, uh, Dan could have handled it himself, but I figured might as well come here and help him out a little bit. So, just to give you a little background, just, uh, the Division Municipal Finance, for those that you don't know of who we are or what we do. I don't have the ability to change the slides. There we go. All right, so in today's presentation, I'll just cover Division Municipal Finance briefly and then distressed aid. We'll go through a number of items. You guys can ask questions as we go, no problem there, you don't have to wait till the end of the presentation. So, just a general statement to begin with, this distressed aid may be a bit of a misnomer. Um, it's actually come up in the past in political process when a municipality is distressed. It's actually not distressed. The whole purpose of the program is to help fund municipalities that have a property tax burden that's, uh, takes up a large percentage of the wealth. There's something there that specifies in the law that you would receive money from the state and there's other benefits that will go through as well. It's all based on the metrics that are specified in law, which I'll get into. So, just DMF in general, the division actually impacts over $1.6 billion in state expenditures to locals. We calculate pilot aid programs, distressed aid is one of those programs. We calculate reimbursements for fiscal updates, which municipalities are required to do once every three and six years. In the ninth year, you're doing a full reval. We also do education aid funding impact from doing what's called a tax equalization of the AWAV. It impacts over $1.2 billion, it actually is part of the formula to determine how much percentage of state aid you'll receive. And also for housing aid, it's actually, the study we produce is determining factor in what percentage that municipality will receive. So, for example, Barrington receives 40%, where Providence receives like 90% reimbursement. That's all dictated by this study we do, which the data is derived from the municipalities directly. So, all the data that we use are all the state aid programs we administer or impact, are all impacted by data we receive from municipalities. We have 100 laws that impact us directly or indirectly, so sometimes we interact with the locals on what may be a potential impact based on what's going at that point in time. We try to keep records of this information, either court proceedings or even legal findings, so we have some resources there. We have 150 different entities that report to us, so we have municipalities themselves, school districts, regional school districts. We had charter schools up to one point, which we eliminated recently in the law. Fire districts, so Central Coventry Fire District, all the fire districts in the state, report to us with financial information. We also have revaluation companies, so when you contract with a revaluation company, they need to be certified by my division. Otherwise, they couldn't do the work for your municipality, which again is every three, six, and nine years. I would say that we have two major laws that impact what we do. One is our enabling legislation that basically uses a lot of soft words to help us work with municipalities, policy decision makers at the government level of the state, as well as the local level. In addition to that, we have the Fiscal Stability Act. So, my office is actually the one that would get involved and take over a municipality, along with the Department of Revenue, which is part of the Division Municipal Finance, or within Department of Revenue. And we would actually be the ones that you'd work with. So, Central Coventry Fire District at one point was under our purview. Wind Socket, East Providence, all those that happened in the past, Central Coventry Fire District, we pulled out of in 2015, which was the last one we did. No one's in oversight at this point. The website link there that you have, I would definitely take your time, take a look at it. We have a ton of good information. So, whether you want to find out about local pensions, local OPEB, property taxes, tax levies, tax rates, financial information. Say, for example, you wanted to see how much, you know, police departments spend on healthcare expenditures. That's all in there for every municipality and state. And in addition to that, school district information is also crosswalkable between the categories we have for revenues and expenses, as well as for the locals, so you can see all that information. If you wanted to see how much your local appropriation is compared to another municipality, you can take a look at that. It's all on the website. Just go to the next slide. So, as far as distressed aid is concerned, some of the high-level items, the data that we're using does three different things. One is qualification, the other is distribution, and then just the timing when we're distributing. So, but qualification data is different from the distribution data that we use. So, qualification data is based on 123121 assessment information, which includes from our latest study in the AWAV or tax equalization. And then levy information that's derived from the locals, along with the fire district information. So, we co-mingle fire district information with the local levy information, so you can do a comparison between the two, right? If you didn't include the fire district levy information in one municipality, but did, because they have a department in another, you wouldn't be able to do that, so we make sure to include it, one, because it makes sense, two, the law specifies it. Included in there is the ACS data, which we pulled down the most recent information. So, when we do the analysis, December of 2024, we pulled it down. It had 23, 2023 census data in there for population and per capita income. That information was used in determining qualification. There are indices that we end up utilizing this data to produce, which I'll get into. Distribution is based on the levy information adjusted for fire districts. We also have to do an adjustment for pilot aid that we distribute, but Coventry's not one of those that received the aid. And then the distribution, excuse me, for fiscal year '26 will happen by August 31st, 2025. So, under law, the indices that we produce, which we'll get into, there's four of those. You need to rank in the bottom 20% of three of the four. If you don't, you don't get the qualification, therefore you don't get the aid. Coventry, as far as I'm aware, this is the first time you're qualifying. So, the four indices that we have, the first one is percent of tax levy to full value of property, and I'll get into a little bit more detail on each one of these. Coventry ranked fifth. For index two, per capita income, it was ranked 16th. And percent of personal income to full value of property ranked seventh. And then per capita full value of property, you rank seventh. So, you have to be in the bottom eight, essentially, and Coventry made it in for the first time. I wouldn't say barely, but you made it in. Each year is a different year, so just because you made it into this year does not mean you can make it into next year. We actually have municipalities that coming in and out of the program pretty regularly. Cranston, I think, did it like three or four years in a row. So, but I'll go into some of those details, what it means for you budgetarily in the future periods and the current period. Sure?
Yes, Vice President Verducci.
Going on the full value of property, so does that, that whatever's frozen, or does that come into play?
So, that's a great question. So, what we do for the tax equalization study we produce, which impacts this, we actually take all the sales for the entire state from each of municipalities. We determine if those are valid sales, and then we actually adjust the assessments that you would use for your levy by those sales. So, we've seen an upward trend in the market recently, right, over the last number of years? So, what we've been seeing is that the assessments are much lower than what the market activity is, right? So, what you could actually tax at is lower than if you were to base it on market activity, which is not the case in the State of Rhode Island. You're basing it on the reval cycle. So, to make sure everybody's on the same cycle, because in addition to be on a three, six, and nine cycle, not everybody in the state does it at the same time. So, you have some municipalities that go this year, some go next, so we actually do it at the same point in time for everybody. So, we're almost doing like a mini reval for the entire state. So, we use that data in this calculation.
Councilwoman Pasqua?
So, just so I understand this, if we have a ton of tax freezes or breaks for certain types of situations, that could land us into a distressed community because our charging assessed value is much lower than the average? Freezing assessments?
Well, freezing assessments are included. Those assessments that you have in your systems are included in the study that we produce.
Okay.
So, we're adjusting those as well. So, you're right, if the assessments here and the market activity's here, we're bringing that to full value because the law says we have to.
Got you.
So, the first indices, just to give a little bit more detail on this, we take the 123121 adjusted levy, which again is the town's levy, fire district's levies, and pilot adjustments that we have to do for every municipality in the state. And we divide that by full value. And essentially, what that produces is a tax per dollar of assessment. It's almost like a tax rate for the entire state, you know, without regard to commercial, residential, tangible, all that stuff. So, I just gave some details in each one of these slides of the high, low, median, average, and where Coventry stands. So, you can see Little Compton is .41, right? Providence is 1.87, Hopkinton's 1.34, and the average was 1.24, and Coventry was fifth at 1.58. So, you want to be higher on the scale, or it depends on what direction you're looking at, a lower number is better, right? And if you go to the next slide, index two, this is just straight ACS data for 2023. We just grabbed the data, again, this past December, we grabbed it to use it for the study. And the high was Little Compton at 94,000, the low was Central Falls at 20,000, the median for Bristol was 50,000, the average was 51,000, and then Coventry was 46,557, which was 16th. So, you're higher relative to everybody else, well, not everybody else, distressed municipalities that are in the program. And again, that's just straight data grabbed from ACS. The next slide on index three, what we do is we take the 23 ACS data for per capita income, and we multiply that by population to give us a total income, essentially, for the municipality itself. And then we divide that by full value, and essentially what that gives us is a total income of the town per dollar of assessment. So, how much the burden is in a way. So, New Charm was 1.2, Central Falls was 40.46, the median was Johnston at 25, the average was 24, and Coventry was at 31.2, which was seventh. Again, lower the number, the better, in relative to the rest of the state and distressed municipalities. And again, distressed may be a misnomer, but that's the name of the program. And then on index four, we take the full value, again, adjusting for sales that are happening at that point in time. So, this is still further back in time, right, this is 123121. The aid you will receive is in fiscal year '26, so the data is older than what year you'll be receiving it. But we take that full value and divide it by the population, so that essentially gives us an assessment per person. And New Charm was 3.3 million, they're an outlier, an extreme outlier. The next, the highest after that was Little Compton at 800-something thousand. Low was Central Falls at 49,000, the median family, I'm sorry, median was North Smithfield at 191,000. The average was 332,000, and Coventry was seventh at 149,000. So, those are the indices that we calculate. Again, you have to place in top 20% in three of the four. What it means for how much money you receive is a different calculation. So, first, we have to determine qualification, then we have to determine how much you're gonna receive. The total appropriation for the program for all municipalities that would qualify was 12.8 million. Under the law, when a municipality first becomes eligible for the program, they get 50% of what they would be required to get. So, in the case of Coventry, again, almost 670,000. That's 50% of what it would be required to, if you were getting the full allocation. So, the full allocation's about 1.3 million. If, as a point of note here, if you fall out of the program, it's also 50%. And then the distribution is based on the share of your levy, again, adjusted for pilot and fire districts, compared to those municipalities that are actually in the program. So, Providence is the largest participant in the program, and they take up the majority of the levy, so they get like 60, 70% of the program in total. And because Coventry's new this year, they're actually, Coventry is taking money away from other participants within the program because the actual program itself does not increase because we have a higher number of participating municipalities. It stays at the 12.8, so new entrant just takes away money from the other municipalities. So, if next year, for example, you end up qualifying again, then your allocation will go up, but then it's at the expense of everybody else. So, I just figured I'd point that out. So, what I've done on this slide is just give some information about scenarios. So, in '26, you're gonna receive 670,000, as long as it's passed by the legislature. I'm not aware of any time it hasn't been, but you never know. So, they'll go through that process, and right now, you're allocated for 50%, which is the 670,000. If in FY '27, assuming everything, all the data points stay exactly the same, other than Coventry qualifying, if Coventry qualifies, you'll get the full 1.3 million, assuming no other data points change. If you fall out of the program, you're still entitled to the 50%, which is the 670,000. So, when you're planning your budget for future periods, you know, you can always contact our office, depending on the point in time. I know when, as soon as I found out that you guys were gonna be a part of the program, I did not contact anybody. I had to wait until the Legislature actually proposed, so then I contacted immediately and let them know that you guys are receiving the money. So, I just want to make sure Coventry had access to the information they need to make budgetary decisions. So, on this last slide, it's just two things here. One, like I said, the state or the Division Municipal Finance reimburses for fiscal updates once every three and six year. If you are a distressed municipality, when that occurs, you receive a higher allocation or a higher percentage of funding. Right now, if, for example, Coventry were to do a fiscal update, which it looks like you're a full revaluation, 123125, so 90 times two in six years, or something like that, whatever the numbers, you could receive up to 60% reimbursement. If you are distressed at the time when this happens, in 123128, which is a number of years from now, you would actually get up to 80%. So, if you're part of the program, you get a higher allocation. Also, the law requires that you participate in the income offset program with taxation, which I contacted taxation the other day, they told me you guys have been participating. So, there's no reason for you guys to, you know, you got to continue to participate, but there's no reason to get on board because you're already there. So, my understanding is that they're working towards including other files and information, so you guys are already there. And then the last slide here is just contact information. I had some staff here, but I had them leave, it was getting a little bit late. The two people I had here were Kim O'Donnell, who is your assigned representative for municipal finance. You guys have any questions, or, you know, Bob has any questions, or Dan has questions. They are the point of contact, they're the ones who collect all the information. More, right now, at the next period of time, what we're looking at is budget disclosure. So, going through that budget process, getting approval from my office, so you can proceed with your budget proceedings is currently being worked on. But Kim is the one who receives this information, reviews it, we verify it. And the other individual was Diana Mendez. She's actually the one that calculates the distressed aid calculation, but she, again, I sent the both of them. So, not here to say hi or anything else, but we are always available, you guys have any questions. We try to work as much as we can with the municipalities because we know how difficult it is. There's a number of laws that dictate that you have to do certain things, and we understand. But laws are the laws, right? You just gotta do what you have to do in some cases. But again, Bob and Dan have been fantastic in the meetings we've had on fiscal issues, and they've been doing their due diligence to do whatever's necessary to get this aligned. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
Any additional questions from Mr. Coleman? Oh, Councilwoman Brown?
More of a thank you, Steve. I've worked with you guys with the fire districts and stuff, and Kim, I wish I would have saw her tonight and said...
She mentioned you, yeah.
But you guys have been great, you're a great resource, and thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Verducci?
I just want to also say thank, one quick question. Do your indices years change each time you do the recalculation?
Yeah, so next year will be 123122 for the assessment.
But thank you very much, hopefully, or luckily, you have a short ride home tonight.
Yeah, it's a minute, so, right down the road.
Thank you, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, what district are you in?
I try to stay out of politics, to tell you the truth, I don't know. I live on Station Street. There you go, you're my representative, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll now move to matters for public hearing. Do I hear a motion to open public hearing?
Make that motion.
A second.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yeah.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
We have one item for public hearing this evening, new application for mechanical and electronic devices, JW's Pub, 433 Washington Street, Coventry. Is the applicant present this evening? Is the applicant on Zoom? Chief ICE, are you versus, or manager Pillo on the request? What are, what are the details? What does mechanical and electronic devices mean? Is there a bowl coming in to JW's Pub? Is there a touch tunes? It wasn't clear in the application. Councilwoman Pasqua?
Yeah, I think we really need to know.
I don't even see the application in our packet. I don't think it was in our packet.
Yeah, I think we need to know that, just because there's been some issues there in the past.
Yeah.
So, we're not inviting something that just causes more headaches. We got enough.
Yeah, I'm pretty sensitive to this one, it's in District Four, so... Can we, are we, can we continue this? Okay. Could I have a motion to, or is there anyone who came to speak on this item first, in particular, public hearing? Anyone on Zoom? All right, could I have a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Brown, any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative, motion passes.
And I'll take a motion to continue this application to the meeting of March... 25th? I'm sorry, April 22nd? April 22nd. Motion by Vice President Verducci?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Capaldi, any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Moving to election and our appointment of town officials. We have one this evening, an opening on the juvenile hearing board, one opening and one applicant. Curtis Carlson, is Mr. Carlson here this evening or on Zoom? Hi. Hope you, hope, thank you for waiting. Just if you want to come up and introduce yourself and talk about your interest in the, in the opening.
Sure, my name's Curtis Carlson, 42 Fairway Drive in Coventry. Basically saw the opening, thought about it and wanted to give back and help out as best I could, so.
Questions, discussion from the council? Councilman Pasqua?
Thank you for applying. Any experience in something like this at all or?
Yeah, sure. I work for a federally funded government trade school that actually operates for underserved youth, 16 to 24-year-old underserved youth. So I have a lot of experience actually doing this exact thing we have within our school, so.
Make a motion to appoint?
Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
Second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving now to report of the town manager. Mr. Prillo has two items this evening.
Thank you. If you recall, the council approved at the end of '24 approximately $30,000 to study stormwater drainage issues on Station Street. So we did receive that report back from PAR Engineering. They said it is feasible to construct the pipe along a 555 linear foot section of the roadway. It will be 12 inches in size to match what's there existing, what's in the roadway currently. It would relieve the issue we're having with smaller storms and reduce the, and the ponding and so forth that, that homeowner is experiencing. So the cost of that pipe is about $300,000. And kind of digging a little deeper, the town engineer asked PAR if that would really handle all of the stormwater in a bigger storm. And they said that would not be sufficient, that we would need to go to a 24-inch pipe. And that's about $600,000. So the study, the, the study's in your packet. And that's the research that we've done based on the council request.
Councilman Capaldi?
I think with this issue, when I became aware of it, we talked about all the Band-Aids that you put on this and all the money that was spent on these Band-Aids that never fixed it. And that's when we called, is it Paray or is it PAR?
PAR, I believe.
PAR. I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn as far as which one to do, but I would say go for the bigger one because if we're going to spend $300,000 on small storms and then a big storm comes, we're going to be in the same situation that we were in before we fixed it. So I would say, I would motion to fix it. Can I motion?
Well, you can make a motion, but I think we need to have a discussion about what funds we're going to use.
Yeah, that's what I thought I was speaking out of.
Something like this would have to come in the form of a resolution.
Okay.
Work with the town manager.
Yes.
Together and.
Yes.
Catch a fiscal note.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to do.
All right, great, thank you.
Assuming probably be a capital project in the future possibly, but we don't have that kind of money in any of our ones currently.
Can I ask my, my colleagues, do they think it's, what are your thoughts on this? I mean, this has been going on for over 10 years. They, the, Dan has said that there's been Band-Aid after Band-Aid after Band-Aid. Nothing's fixing it and you keep more money into a Band-Aid. I think we should fix it once and for all for forever.
Councilman Pasqua?
Yeah, I think this is something we should have a discussion about. But I, I agree, you know, we need to figure out where the money's coming from, you know, whether it's, you know, maybe the discussion is, is just that. Are we pulling this out of bond, bond, what's the term I'm looking for? Bond holds when, when we have a construction project from a developer, impact, no.
Yeah, impact fees you're talking about? We don't, I don't think.
No, when we develop a neighborhood, we hold back a certain amount of money from them. Yeah, maybe because we don't release them sometimes because they didn't build them to spec. Is, you know, we, if there's drainage issues in that area, we've talked about holding them back before. So maybe, I don't know if there's anything in that area that we can pin this to. I know that we have litigate, well, potentially, possibly something going on. I don't know, but I'd be careful how I talk about that. So I think we need to have an offline discussion about where the money can come from, if there's an alternative creative source, basically what I'm looking at.
Councilman Brown?
Apparently they're just dry wells, right?
Yeah, but so the town's already installed dry wells outside of the front of his house. We've raised the asphalt. We've kind of tried to tilt the road a little bit. But basically his house is in, in a bowl on Station Street. So that's, that's a tough.
There's no drainage pipe. It's just a dry well right now.
In front of him, correct.
So even if you put a 12-inch in, it's probably going to help out a lot.
It'll help out more than it is now, correct.
Right, because once the water comes up in the dry well, it's not draining. So now at least it'll take it away.
Yeah. That's all I'm. It's just a number of, the number of those 100-year storms that we get seem to be happening.
Well, I think we have to find out what they determine as a small storm and what they determine as a big storm.
Yeah, we can, we can dive into the report further.
Vice President Verducci?
So just two quick things, townwide kind of perspective, order of magnitude, that's almost a 1% increase in the levy, just to give you an idea on the $600,000 range. I'm interested to know if this would be better suited for something more comprehensive. I don't know, as part of a, a different study or is this just singularly focused on this one?
Just for one person?
Everything else around it is?
There's, there's issues behind him. He's kind of like I said, he's in a bowl, there's a new plat above him. This would definitely take care of the water that's getting onto his property from Station Street. But it's basically, it's a solution for him.
I think we've got to think comprehensively because our weather has changed and we're getting calls from all over town about how infrastructure that was built based on state regulations that were crafted for storms they never anticipated we'd be seeing today. So I wonder if this is a larger discussion about what are all the other large infrastructure issues with drainage in town? And maybe it's a matter of coupling it together. We know that we may potentially have to bond for a dam issue. Maybe it becomes a climate resiliency bond and we can add some things like this into it, not just for this particular individual in this issue, but maybe there are other areas we have in our capital list that we have drainage issues or climate or wastewater issues that we can do this comprehensively and fix issues around town all at the same time and do it in a way that's financially sound. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I think we also have some other questions about what percentage of storms would that 12-inch pipe solve out of however many we get? Is it, is it going to handle 90% of the storms? Or, I mean, $300,000 difference is a big difference, so.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, it seems like my district has a lot of the flooding issues. So yeah, I guess a lot of places do. Can I ask you a question? How do we talk about this?
We can make it a discussion on the council agenda. We talk more largely about, we can go over a lot of the big, the recurring climate resiliency or wastewater issues or drainage issues we get and see how that could be packaged together comprehensively.
I'm for that.
The next item on my list is the school bond projects. So there's a resolution in front of the council tonight to move forward with the $25 million school bond. I've just provided the project list to the council. Basically, it's, it's $10 million at the high school, $9 million at the middle school, $4 million at Western Coventry, and then half a million for the other elementary schools. It's definitely needed. We had a school building committee meeting last night for the first time in a year and a half. Now that we got our 23 audit done, we have our bond rating back and 24 is going to be done soon. We're going to be moving forward with that school bond with the approval of the council. And those are just basically the, the list of projects that are proposed to get done in a very timely manner. I just want to present that in front of the council.
Any questions, discussion on that? All right. Thank you. Moving to the report of the finance director, update on budget to actual through March 31st, 2025. This is on pages 38 to 68 in your packets.
Good evening. So again, in your packet, you did receive a balance sheet as of specific point in time. So as of March 31st, 2025, we could see the various cash accounts, various categories, obviously what we have in payables related specifically to the general fund. But then the budget versus actual comparison again goes through the nine months ended March 31st, 2025, where I also provided this evening, I think you have in your packet, you know, some of the highlights, which I'm not going to read through in detail. But if you have any specific questions on what you were provided, you know, in your packet last Friday, I'd be happy to answer them. And if I can't, if I don't have the answer, get that to you. But, you know, currently, you know, revenue's trending slightly higher. So we're at about 79.4% of the revenue received to date versus our budget, where we, you know, the actual would be 75%, right? If you just prorate it. On the expenditure side, we're right in line with the expenditures, even though, you know, some expenditures incur a lot upfront, like some of the workers comp policies, regular insurance policies. There are a couple line items where you see we, we are over budget. You know, we, we went over budget in the snow plowing budget, primarily the salt line item. You see, there's a significant over expenditure there. You know, it's all based on the timing of storms. We were low on the salt. We needed to have it in case we had another storm and hopefully that's past us. We don't have any storms, but that salt would obviously be utilized in the future. It's secured in the salt shed and utilized for next year. But again, at this point, we don't see any reason to, you know, for concerns. We think we're trending in the, the right way for both the town. And then you'll see, we do have the line item in, in the town's general fund budget for the school miscellaneous revenue just comes, which just comes through as a pass through. And that number, although this report says March 31st, the only data we had was for the school through February 28th, where that miscellaneous revenue, which is Medicaid reimbursements, interest income, tuitions, you know, just their whole mix of revenue, other than, other than the state aid, that's already trending higher. So there, they recognized approximately 1.9 million in revenue through February and their budget was 1,758. So, you know, they're seeing some positive trends on the revenue side. I know the school department, when they were here previously, you know, talked about making some changes and how they're billing for Medicaid reimbursement and those type of items. So again, right now, you know, we're trending on a good note. We don't see any reason for, you know, concern.
End of year freezing or anything?
Yeah, and I, I did circulate this. When this went to the council last week, I circulated it to all department heads, asked them to review their budget in detail. Because as I said, we do have some departments that may be slightly over. But hopefully within each department, they can, you know, come within budget and some departments would come under budget to, to protect that, so.
Questions, discussion from members of the council? Vice President Verducci?
Just a kind of operational question. As we're going through the different iterations of the budget, these get fed into your year-to-date's?
They have not. I, the most recent budget, I believe we had through February 28th, one of the numbers that we had. So we don't revise that column every time the budget. So initially, when we first putting together the budget, we did circulate to each department head December 31st. I think when the town manager and I first started going through the budget, we actually had, you know, December 31st, but then we were able to get everything caught up. And that's where we updated it, February 28th, when the presentation was made to the council. At this point, those numbers would stay there. If the council would like us to update it, we can certainly do that. But we try to put at least what we were focusing on when the budget was presented by the town manager to the council.
Thank you.
Further questions for the finance director? Thank you. Resolutions of the council? We have a handful this evening. Resolution 2025-35, approval of a contract to repave the entire Briar Point Beach parking lot to Vinaigro Materials LLC. This is on page 69 to 70 in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
A second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi, discussion?
So November 24, the council approved $75,000 in opera funds to pave a portion of Briar Beach parking lot. With the grant that Maria Broadbent's working on, we need to actually pave the entire parking lot and do some manipulation of the parking lot so it drains properly for her grant. Along with that, like we've said before, we do plan on opening the entire beach and striping it and having the whole thing operational. So the additional expenses for the additional paving of the parking lot, the balance of the funds, the $34,354 will come from, I'm sorry, the balance of 44,950 will come from impact fees on the recreation department.
Discussion from members of the council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-36, adoption of the provisional budget for fiscal year 2026. This is on page 71 in your packet. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution? Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
A second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi, discussion?
So we put this together based on the presentation of the town manager's budget and the changes, the few changes that we made regarding the special election and the additional cost in the town manager's budget. So based on what we had discussed after the budget hearings, this is the, the document that we're presenting for a provisional budget. Once this gets approved by council, it goes to municipal finance, like Chief Coleman said, for approval. Then we'll advertise it and then we'll begin the public hearings on the, I think it's 26th and May 3rd, while we pass a final budget on May 6th. This is the first step in that next process.
Discussion from the council? Councilman Pasqua?
Just for the people listening too, I, I want to make sure we're clear on this, that this is not the actual budget adoption, but we're adopting a proposed provisional budget, I should say, and it's a 2.71% tax increase. And so people have seen the 4.8% and they're thinking that we're going over the 4% and, and that's not the case. And I know I've talked to a few other municipalities that are going through their budget time as well right now. And most of them are redlining right at that 4% or at the 4%. So I'm happy to see that we're far lower than a lot of the neighboring communities with a 2.71%. But it's not a 4.89% tax increase. That's not what we're talking about.
Any other discussion from members of the council?
Vice President, just to be clear, that number is based on last year's numbers, correct?
Right, so when you mentioned the 2.71%, that shows our net tax revenue to be generated. When we actually, as we mentioned before, the tax assessors office is still working on, you know, the final numbers. Obviously, if new developments come in town, the roads change. So you could see a tax increase that's a little less than that or slightly more than that. But you're 100% correct that, you know, the overall budget is proposed to increase by 4.89%. But as you just heard from Chief Coleman, we have some revenue coming in for distressed communities. We have additional state aid, additional school revenue. So there's other revenue sources that are increasing that we're not having to go to the taxpayers. So the proposal currently is to, you know, for that tax, net tax revenue to increase by approximately 2.71%. True impact on the levy, unfortunately, we won't know that until we get all the information entered into the tax assessor system and see what we had in growth as well as what we may lose for, you know, tax-free components.
Vice President Verducci?
All right, now I got one. Can you give a spread on that? Are we plus or minus on that or is it? It's okay if you can't, I just.
I, I really can't because we don't know that number. But just, you know, as, for an example, so if we looked at just the numbers from last year, I think we talked in the finance committee, right, last week? If we looked at everything stayed even, the tax assessment last year, we know we can't go up on the tangible tax rate, right? That's essentially, it's limited. That's the ma, what we, what we're currently billing, that's the maximum we could bill for tangibles as far as the tax rate. So you got the residential and commercial. If we say frozen stays the same, which we know it's not going to, you know, the impact on the residential rate, we've been looking at about 47 cents per thousand. So on a $400,000 home, based on what we're currently looking at, again, again, no other additions to the tax levy or to the tax assessment base, you'd be looking at about a $180 increase per year for a $400,000 home. But again, I would think, we've obviously had some growth in the town. So we're going to see some of those rate increases, some of the value increases. Hopefully, that's not offset by, you know, some of the freezes that take place. So I would say, yeah, I would think we'd come in right around that range. But again, it's tough to predict.
Further discussion from members of the council? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-37, to go out to bond for the school bond, 25 million in total. This is on pages 72 to 73 in our packets. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua, second by Councilman Brown, discussion. Ms. Prillo?
So this is the resolution I just spoke of that are going to supplement, pay for those $25 million projects. Basically, is the council authorizing myself, the solicitor, and the Finance Director to work with Rybeck to get that bond process going. We're ready to submit the application. This is part of the application. The goal is to have this in front of the Rybeck Board in June and full approval in July, which at that point, we'll also have a 24 audit. So everything is kind of lining up for a mid-July availability of funding. And this is the first step in that process.
Discussion from the council? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-38, to purchase a 2025 Ford F250 Crew Cab XL for the police department utilizing the 2024 federal project award funding for $56,663.55. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
I made that motion.
Motion by Councilman Pasqua?
Second.
Second by Councilman Capaldi, chief.
So this is the grant that we had applied for and we received. It's fully funded to buy that vehicle. It's fully outfitted.
Motion to approve.
Any questions for chief?
Just wondering, did you say there's no match or maybe there's 100%?
100%.
Those are the best ones.
There's no further discussion. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-39, to purchase a 2025 virtual server hardware and software for the police department utilizing the 2024 federal project award funding for $24,478.49. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Brown. Second by Councilman Pasqua, chief.
So this one was another grant, same grant we had applied for and received for the virtual server hardware and software. 100% covered.
Any discussion, questions? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-40, AED purchase, resolution supplying frontline police patrol vehicles in municipal town buildings excluding schools with AEDs. Request for funding to be paid by opioid settlement funds in the amount of $25,334.61. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Capaldi, second by Councilman Brown, chief.
With this one here, a lot of the AEDs are out of date and out of service. So we'd like to replace all the ones in the town buildings and.
Discussion? Councilman Brown, I mean, Councilman Pasqua.
I'm glad to see this. I know you guys use them. I've gone to cardiac arrests and senior offices deploying AEDs, and those things save lives. So I'm glad you guys are on top of this. This is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Verducci.
So just a question. When we get new ones of these, is there any, you know, testing or other things that, you know, we need to budget for as well, as far as certifying them or once they're in, are they good or?
They pretty much test themselves. The only thing we replace is pads when they're used on victims.
Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Resolution 2025-41, communications tower equipment relocation resolution for up to $100,000 to be funded by the radio maintenance fund. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Pasqua, chief.
With this one here, out west, we have interference issues with radios. Rima's given us the opportunity to put our equipment on their new tower that they built in Foster. We're going to be utilizing the radio maintenance fund. We gave them, we got quotes on it, but we're not sure if it could go up to 100,000 with incidentals.
Councilman Brown?
Just a comment. Lee Bessett over there has done a heavy lift on this project, and he should be commended for his efforts that he put into this project. So just want to pass that along, chief.
Yes, he definitely has.
Any further discussion? Vice President Verducci.
What goes into the fund? How do we generate? What is it, radio maintenance?
So it's a budgetary item. It comes from our EMA budget. We transfer it over to the radio maintenance fund. And so if you had, say, our lightning strike hit one of the towers and we need to replace equipment, rather than have to come up with the money.
Councilman Brown?
Each fire district puts into it two $5,000, the radio maintenance fund, every year.
Vice President Verducci.
Is it true, I've heard rumors, you know, about how bad those communications can be out there? Is that, you know, it's pretty bad?
There are some.
Stories where you've had to knock on doors to use landlines to communicate or?
Sometimes the cell phones don't even work out there.
All right, really important. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing non-clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Go to Councilmember Communications. Vice President Verducci has the report of the Finance Committee meeting of April 1st, 2025.
Thank you very much. So as you all know, we recently sat, our Finance Committee had our first meeting the other night. A lot of the topics that were generated there, we kind of all chipped in and talked about beforehand, and that's what we use to set the agenda. What I was envisioning for this is basically gives us a chance to deep dive into some of the issues. And then what I like to do is, you know, bring it up to a high level and put it in big picture terms so we kind of have a sense of the magnitude of some of the items. So hopefully, this is helpful to people out there. Welcome to feedback as this goes forward. What I'll do is just take you through a quick update of each of the agenda items. We're not looking for any kind of, you know, voting or anything like that. This is just meant to add information. So we'll keep these going as we see fit. If there's other issues you think need to go before a subcommittee for a deeper dive, that's what we'll be willing to do should we meet again. The first topic was the number of FTEs. You know, what is the standard and what are we increasing by? Right now, we dove into that and, correct me if I'm wrong, Finance Director, but we are at 191 FTEs, adding seven and a half, and.
Will we get a printout of these notes?
I don't know if you have my exact notes, but be happy to share them. Yeah.
I'd love to get your highlights. Thank you.
So just picking up from this, seven and a half additional FTEs. Big picture wise, we're looking at three more in the DPW, and then one each in Board of Canvases, Tax Assessor, General Treasurer, Vehicle Maintenance, and we have a half FTE in Parks and Rec. Just for your notes, when you see the readout on the FTEs, there is an additional half of a position in the Buildings Department. When they were before us, they were mentioning that'd be based on volume. So it may not need to be in there, but it's there as a placeholder should the volume warrant the additional half position. The next two items are based on surveys through the Royal Island League of Cities and Towns that our administrators reached out on. First question, what do other municipalities have for a healthcare buyback compared to our current buyback setup of 4,300 family, 2,000 single? We found it's a wide range, as you would expect. We have some who offer minimal, you know, a few hundred. We have some others that are at 7,500. So when you get a range like that, it's not, you know, exactly super helpful because it's tough to get a real average. But what it allows us to do is realize that there are precedents set in these worlds. We have some room here. But the important thing to note is for this at least budget cycle, this will not apply to a lot of employees in the town. They're either under a bargaining contract or they may potentially have their own standalone contract. However, a couple of those major contracts are coming up in the next couple of years. So if we are looking to reduce in certain ways, certainly we have a precedent here. We have the guidance here. One thing we talked about is potentially phasing something in, you know, where it goes down, you know, 25% over four years or we keep a minimum. All this stuff, again, is for discussion purposes, you know, for everyone to weigh in on when the time comes. But just to give you a sense of things, I don't think we were talking about more than 20 people, maybe we could affect, just to give you a sense of the magnitude.
Yeah, again, I think in your packet there, we did put together, based on the meeting last week, where currently we have 49 people that are participating in the buyback program for healthcare. The breakdown of that, we have 36 that are union members, 13 are non-union members. So as Council Vice President just mentioned, those 36 were tied to a contractual obligation. At this point, 13 are all administrative personnel that are participating.
Right. So, you know, if we decide to take it down by 1,000, 13,000, just to give you a sense of how the game could work out as we're going through it. Similarly, we also surveyed for a, we're looking at the defined contribution. Right now in town, sorry, yeah, defined contribution, we have a 10% match on the 401K. People had brought to us, hey, that seems high, you know, just from people's experience out corporate world or other jobs. Very similar, again, we do see a different range. A lot of the pensions out there right now are actually controlled by either, you know, the employees retirement system or the municipal retirement system. Those can range, you know, based on years of service, collective bargaining agreements. There's just a ton of different ways. So again, similarly, we do believe we're on the high side of that. It's another place to look, but also similarly, I think we got some updated information tonight on how many people are taking advantage of that. It may not be a huge bang for our buck, but Mr. Sovedi?
So again, you should have the list there where we show that as of last pay period, so last Friday, we had 78 people that were involved in, or 78 employees that are involved in the defined contribution pension plan. 47 of those are union members, so again, tied to a collective bargaining agreement. 31 are non-union position. And you can see the range of contributions. We have some employees doing a 1% contribution, which then the town obviously matches the 1%. The town will match up to a 1%. So based on the current data, the average contribution rate is 7%, which is a price tag of $7,000 per pay period, so about $350,000 a year.
So again, not to minimize these impacts because every dollar does, you know, help, especially when we talk about increasing levies and, you know, we want to be responsible with this. So again, this sets the table. It gives you the magnitude of options here. You know, again, obviously, these would need to be worked through in collective bargaining, but just to kind of set the stage so everyone's aware of what's going on. You know, that's the magnitude of it, a few hundred grand. Should we decide to bring that down, that may change who wants to be a part of it, similar with the buyback. You know, if you're not offering the buyback, maybe people take the insurance instead. So, you know, it's not 100% one-for-one on either of these, but I think it did warrant a good discussion. We got some good numbers here. And again, it gives us another kind of tool here to use if we wanted to focus in on some savings in the future. Next item we looked at was the current revenue increase proposal based on last year's number. So I kind of alluded to this before, but, you know, about, and again, this is order of magnitude stuff for discussion purposes, 1% on the tax levy worth about 700K. The projected increase of 3% yield an additional 2.1 million. But this is where you start to kind of get into what those numbers mean and what they look like, big picture wise. You know, we looked at what the tax revenue base is right now, and it's about 80% residential versus 20% commercial. That doesn't take into account what's frozen. But just to give you an idea, you know, compared to some other growing communities, we are definitely lacking on the commercial side on that. So again, when these tax increases come up, it does increase the impact to the residential community, which is what we all see when our taxes go up. So again, not a, something we definitely want to address directly immediately, but just keep the framework in mind as we're going through. And, you know, there's good and bad with each kind of development, but this just sets the table for discussion as we go through the process. Also, we kind of discovered as we were going through, almost $900 million of residential property is currently frozen at previous tax levels. So there are some people out there who have been frozen for 20 years, 30 years, 25 years, and could be paying 700 bucks a year or, you know, just again, to give you an idea, you know, it's not everybody, but there's certainly a bell curve here where there's opportunities for change. But that's one side of the coin. So, you know, we look at the revenues, we look at the forecasts, just to give you, again, a sense of that stuff. Let's see, we looked at pension liabilities and the increase in the percent funded. You have a special handout on that. You know, and this is again, for everyone's awareness, we talk about a $96 million debt a lot of times. Just to make the point, we've got our debt, similar to like you'd have a mortgage, and then we have, you know, a budget deficit, which is more of like an operating shortfall. So for right now, our current outstanding debt is the 96 million. Majority of that is coming from two unfunded pension liabilities mainly. Police, that's 64 million, town employees, around 17 million. This is a long-term debt. So while it's not a positive thing to have to, you know, put it like you would at your own home, you've got to keep paying your mortgage, but you've also got to do what you got to do with your car. You've got to buy your groceries, so on and so on. So it's an oversimplification, but just really to set the stage on what that point is, our total budget as a town is 120 million. So to say we're 95 million in deficit, is it just a bit of a misstatement? Is it's not a true deficit? It's more of an outstanding debt. Again, not saying that's a good thing. But when you look at that and you have to ask yourself, what do we do here with it? Do we curtail services or reduce the tax levy by a percent to get $700,000 back? You may cut a big program to do that, and you may pay off that debt in 38 years instead of 40. So it's just, again, just so everyone's awareness, to keep the big picture in mind on what these terms mean and what they look at when we're looking at these balance sheets. Particularly, we are on a good trend directionally. Funded ratio for the police was 13.8% in 2015. You know, there's nobody who's going to say that's good. But it did increase to a little bit over 33%, so about a 20% increase of fundedness in the last decade. Similarly, in that same time period, the funded ratio for the town employees plan went from about 34% to 47%, so about 17% increase. Those things obviously subject to market and, you know, your investments that you're making. But again, no one's going to say it's not great to have those things funded more. It does add to the debt. However, it's important to note, directionally, it's going in the right place. And as we make the decisions going forward, do we sacrifice current services in order to pay that debt down quicker? That's the kind of thinking we have to have, if we're being honest intellectually about, you know, what does each budget look like? Question?
Councilman Pasqua.
Just a quick question while we're on the topic of pensions. So, pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I think it's probably good to just kind of. So, pretty sure I know the answer to this, but I think it's probably good to just kind of think this out publicly. So, when we talk about pension liability, especially like the police department, I would imagine one of the detrimental things that causes that pension liability to inflate is having high turnover, vacancies, and younger people on, because they are technically more of a pension liability, because they could technically, let's say, they get hurt and they're out for their career, and they've only worked there for six weeks. We could be on the hook for that for a while, so that's factored into that, right? Isn't that what we think about when we talk about pension liability? Am I wearing a ballpark?
Again, it's actuarially determined, right? So, the actuaries look at the age of the participants, life expectancy, their career. So, a lot of it's more so like looking at the pension plan itself, right? If it says they fully vest in 15 years or 20 years, so if you have a retiree that, you know, is fully vested, let's say, 20 years, and they're starting here at age 22, they're retiring at age 42, they're going to be drawing a pension for a lot longer period. So, that timeframe does come into play, and likewise, you know, we could see with the current market volatility we're experiencing right now, you know, this is measured every June 30th. So, if the market were to continue with a downward trend, we may see that, you know, 33% funded or 45% funded mention decreasing, because it looks at the current fair market value of the assets. So, again, it's a snapshot at that point, but as Vice President mentioned, it's not a liability we have to pay today. So, I could tell you from this administration, what I've seen from this council, or from the town manager, and, you know, my office, and with the council, we're always going to recommend that you fund what the actuary says you do. So, as long as you continue to fund that, what they could all consider the actuary-determined contribution, if you approve that in your budget, we're going to get to the goals of having plans at 100% funded, maybe years after we're all gone, but, you know, you're getting there, you're trending on the right thing. So, as a, I'm a council member, you know, as you know, but sitting in your seats, I want to make sure we're always funding what the actuary says we need to fund. When you get in trouble is when you take some of that, those required pension contributions, and start using them for roads or for other type of, you know, operating costs, that you're going to run into problems. So, you know, this is a, we call a legacy cost, right? So, this didn't happen overnight, these plans didn't become underfunded overnight. It was years of neglect, for whatever reason, that, again, you could see in the reports that were provided, you know, that the town has had an effort to make those contributions. So, as long as we continue to do that, you get to the right place. So, short to answer, there's many factors that go into it, but definitely age is an issue. I don't know so much about, you know, if somebody were to come here five years and then leave to go to another department, I don't think there's much of an impact there other than the fact that, you know, they have the ability to take their contributions out, so they pull out the full amounts or not where, you know, we're not able to keep that money invested.
Got you. So, like, and the difference for, just for clarity, I guess, if we, for example, had, if they, if certain departments were in a state pension, and then they moved to a different department, we would essentially be off the hook for that liability, because they would just transfer it with them, instead of it staying localized with the town?
That's correct.
Oh, good to know.
Any further questions for Vice President Verducci? Okay, yep.
I know there's nothing more exciting than budget updates at 9:30. One more item that we did have on there, we wanted to discuss exactly how we're going to handle the deficit resolution with the school committee. Pretty simple update, we are still waiting for the final audit number. So, you know, it's not 100% recommended to go in with a full deficit resolution plan for the 5.8 million, because it could change. However, we recognize that this 2026 budget needs to be accurate and fully stated as to what the town council's putting in. So, it was recommended and discussed that, you know, for the full council to look at perhaps a resolution defining exactly what we will be putting in for the school side this year, with the intent that, once that final number is known, we draft the full deficit reduction plan with all the details, all the commitments from both sides, and hopefully put that issue to a pause as far as the, you know, tinkering goes and submit it. Again, Steve, who is here tonight, from Municipal Finance, all required by state law, these are all things that have to be included. So, that's where we were going to go with next. That's all I got.
Anything else? All right, thank, thank you. And back to introduction of new matters before the council. We have another item this evening, approval of Narragansett Electric and Verizon New England Incorporated to be granted permission to locate and maintain poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustain and protecting of fixtures to be owned by and used in common by you petitioner along and across the following public ways. Flat River Road relocate P 501-25 and install P 501-75. Flat River Road relocate P 594, install P 5094-84, and install P 587-50. Do I hear a motion to approve the request?
We should approve P 501 and P 594.
A second. Motion by Councilwoman Pasqua, second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing non-cler, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua?
Yes.
Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following. Closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A9 for discussion of grievance filed pursuant to a collective bargaining agreement. An executive or closed session pursuant to Rhode Island General Law Section 42-46-5A1 for job performance for town managers' annual evaluation. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Brown. Second by Councilwoman Capaldi. Any discussion? Hearing non-cler, please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua? Councilmember Capaldi?
Yes.
Vice President Verducci?
Yes.
President Lima?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero in the negative. Motion passes.
We'll now go into executive session.[1002.73]
Could I have a motion to, uh, come out of executive session?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Councilwoman Brown, any discussion? Clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua, Councilmember Capaldi, Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
I have a motion to seal the minutes of executive session.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Capaldi, second by Vice President Verducci, any discussion? Hearing non-clerk please take the roll.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Pasqua. Councilmember Capaldi. Vice President Verducci.
Yes.
President Lima.
Yes.
Five in the affirmative, zero on the negative, motion passes.
Members of the public, the council met in executive session to discuss the two items listed on our docket this evening. A discussion was had, no votes were taken. At this time I'll seek a motion to adjourn at 10:19 PM.